Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this March 8th, 2021, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to Order. Start a meeting as we always do. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. To those folks watching at home, thank you for being part of our evening. Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the role of the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Beloga?
Present.
Councilmember Carter?
Present.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Lohman? I don't see him online yet. Councilmember Martin?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Bussie?
Here. We have six of the seven members of the Bloomington City Council present. Councilmember Lohman, I'm sure, is on his way, probably running just a little bit late, but I know he'll be here, and we will make note of that when he does arrive. Next on our agenda is Item 3, which is the approval of the agenda. Council, do we have any changes or corrections or additions, subtractions from this evening's Seeing none, I would move approval of our agenda this evening.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve this evening's agenda. And I would like to note, Councilmember Lohman is now with us. Hearing no further discussion about the agenda, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. We have an agenda for this evening. Next up on our agenda is Item 4, which is our public comment period. We've got two items under public comment period, as always, a response to the prior meeting's public comments, and then the public comment period itself, which is a 20-minute period that we have at every meeting, giving residents an opportunity to speak to the city council on items not on tonight's agenda. But we will start with Item 4.1, a response to the prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We had two residents that addressed the council last Monday, Elizabeth Longo and Natalie Moros. Both of their comments seemed mostly directed at the council and did not require staff follow-up or any research. I would note that one of the questions that Ms. Moros asked was how residents can engage with the council on various issues, and I think it's a good opportunity to just point out again that we have multiple avenues for residents to provide their input directly to councilmembers for agenda items or any issues that are not on the agenda that are of concern to them. We do have a city council email on the website that goes to all of the councilmembers. Each of the councilmembers have their individual email addresses listed on the website as well, so you can contact one or a select number of councilmembers if you do not wish to email the whole group. We also have, the council secretary collects both phone calls and emails that are directed at councilmembers and shares those with the city councilmembers. And then we also provide for direct participation during the meeting through our call-in. So there's always an opportunity, councilmembers see the information that is provided by residents, even if you do it not during a meeting, the council secretary will make sure that the council sees those comments. So if you do have a question about wanting to contact the council and aren't sure of the best way to do it, we're always happy to answer those questions, too, at staff level. The council secretary will be happy to point you in the right direction, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I get from residents is regarding if they reach out to us and email us what happens with that information, and do we have to provide that if somebody does a data request, that type of thing. You know, I'm just wondering if Jamie, the city manager, can just talk to that a little bit, if somebody has a concern that they're going to express an unpopular opinion and then everyone's going to know about it or something of that nature.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, it's a good question. If a constituent emails a councilmember directly, it is at the discretion of the councilmember to decide if they wish to make that email public or not. So it is not presumed to be a public communication, however, the councilmember maintains a discretion of whether to share that. And if you were to share that with another councilmember or multiple councilmembers, that would make it, or with staff, that would make it public. If it comes into the email that goes to all city councilmembers, that will be public document. So it's only the person-to-person communication between a constituent and a councilmember that the councilmember can decide if it's going to stay private or public.
Thank you, city manager, for providing that clarification for people, because I do know there are some sensitive issues sometimes that people want to be able to have a conversation about, and I think that's an important part of our role, is to be able to do that for people.
Council, any additional questions? If not, let's move to Item 4.2 on the agenda, which is the public comment period itself. As I said, it's a 20-minute period at each of our council meetings where residents are allowed to come forward and speak to the council on any item not on tonight's agenda. We do limit comments to five minutes to give everyone equal opportunity to be able to comment in front of the council. And we generally will not interact with callers, with folks who are speaking in public comment period. We'll look to answer basic factual questions, but there's not going to be a back-and-forth on the issue brought forward. What we do is gather the information, and then Mr. Verbrugge, at the next meeting, does answer the questions with time to prepare and research and answer a little bit more in depth rather than shooting from the hip on some of these issues. So with that, I would like to open the public comment period. Ms. Wilson, do we have any callers on the line who wish to speak to Item 4.2, our public comment period?
Mr. Mayor, I will find out. Alicia, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. Alicia, do we have any callers that wish to speak under the public comment period? This is Agenda Item 4.2.
One moment. For our callers, if you want to ask a question, you may press star 1 on your telephone keypad. Again, the star 1 on your telephone keypad. We have Darren Mell. Your line is now open.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, city council, for the opportunity to speak.
Good evening. If I could ask you, if you could just, hold on. Excuse me a second. If I could just ask you to repeat your name, just so we have it clearly for the record, and we get it on the record, and then you can go ahead.
Yep. Darren Mell. Good evening. My name's Darren Mell, and a former resident and longtime employee of a business in Bloomington, frequent visitor to the world of America. And I am president of Voice of the Voice List. It's a public education nonprofit which represents the rights and interests of those who have left in LGBT identity and have experienced change in sexual orientation. And I wanted to comment and provide some feedback on your previous meetings as you've covered your potential conversion therapy ordinance. And I'm an expert in this field, having experienced a change in sexual orientation from being exclusively heterosexual to exclusively, I'm sorry, exclusively homosexual to exclusively heterosexual. Been married 15 years, with children now. And I've actually interacted with the independent expert on conversion therapy at the UN, and my own work has been referenced by the UN on this topic. And I would like to start out by just reviewing some of the one-sidedness of the presentations thus far and offer you some of the other side, which has been requested but not provided. Their sexual orientation is defined as the romantic attraction to someone of the other sex, emotional romantic or sexual attraction, and that is a feeling. And feelings can change and desires can change, as they have in my life and thousands of others that I represent. And the American Psychological Association has been misquoted and misrepresented their paper on human sexuality as it regards conversion therapy. The actual paper itself does not condemn sexual orientation change efforts. It neither condemns nor affirms it, but it does provide anecdotal evidence that people religiously motivated, for example, can experience change, and that's the avenue that I come from. Some of your staff lawyer had mentioned that they're not aware of any legal challenges to conversion therapy. And if you just Google "conversion therapy, New York City," their ordinance, they repealed it because they had a constitutional challenge, and they believed that it would go to the Supreme Court and overturn all efforts of conversion therapy across the country, and so they chose to repeal it. Additionally, Tampa tried to pass, or actually did pass it, and theirs was overturned in federal court as well. This has not been overturned in any of the cities that was shared, they passed in Minnesota, but they haven't been challenged yet. Also, one of the reports was quoted, was Williams Institute report stating that several tens of thousands of people have been exposed to conversion therapy. However, that report, if you read it, the actual research, they cite their own unpublished research, eight trimes. They don't actually provide how they came to this conclusion that all these people are being exposed. It's an equivalent of estimates based on best guesses, based on assumptions. Also, I called myself, I called on all the licensing boards in Minnesota to ask if any therapists in the state of Minnesota have been found in noncompliance with the law of coercion, of shaming, or forcing children into conversion therapy. And the marriage and family counseling director told me that not a single incident has been related to conversion therapy in the state, so this is not actually happening according to the licensing boards. And then your reporting also provided to you included the Trevor Project and Sam Brinton, their feedback. And I would like to point out that their own research is based on feedback from their own community and didn't include anybody that has left the LGBT community and experienced beneficial therapy, and it's talk therapy. And so the Supreme Court has also, in turning over the NIFLAC case, has said that you can't cart out speech and call it professional and then prevent it. And that's what happened with the NIFLAC case, they were actually trying to force speech, and they can't do that, and neither can you prevent therapy, talk therapy. And so with that, if there's any questions, I believe that's my five minutes.
It is. Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Mell. Appreciate it.
Alicia, do we have other callers for Agenda Item 4.2, the public comment period?
Yes, we have Liz Longo on the line, and her line is now open.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth, or Liz Longo, and thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the city council and the mayor and the city manager and everyone involved. Whether we agree or disagree on any particular issue, I know you guys put in a ton of work. And I actually sat through the entire meeting last week online, and I am just amazed by the dedication that you have. So with that said, I am calling regarding the conversion therapy draft ordinance review. For the purpose of this, I am not debating whether a person has a biological inclination towards a non-heterosexual sexuality, nor am I debating the issue of gender dysphoria. City council, please uphold the right to privacy, the sole right of an individual to freely choose a licensed mental health practitioner that honors the client's values, beliefs, and goals. Please uphold the rights of the client to seek therapy for any motivation, any motivation, free from the government or political group's obstruction or intrusion. Please uphold the right of the minor and the rights of the parents to parent in working together to do what the parents and minor deem best for the minor, not what a particular party or an activist group or the lobbyist groups deem right or wrong. Please uphold the client's right to have a safe space to explore and the right to self-determination with a therapist who will honor their freely chosen values, not the values of the therapist. Please uphold the right of the client to integrate their religion, their morals, their values, and their spiritual beliefs into their therapy if they choose. The City of Bloomington Human Rights Commission and the city council does not have the medical expertise, nor the science, nor the facts, to decide what a licensed mental health therapist may provide to a client in the privacy of the office or in the privacy of the virtual office. To be clear, a city council commission is not a psychotherapist. Like I said, they don't have the qualifications to deem it good or bad. Based on the sources cited in the HRC presentation last week, it appears they did not interview any of the tens of thousands of people that have sought and received successful therapy for their issues. In addition, they did not research into the American College of Pediatrics, Voice of the Voice List, Changed Movement, Courage RC, Encourage RC, and many more groups that are out there. There are tens of thousands of people that have sought help for their issues. Thank you for your time on this matter, and I hope that the Bloomington Human Rights Commission and the city council will choose to keep our city inclusive and not ban businesses based on a slanted ideological view. I also have a tip for the Bloomington Human Rights Commission. If they would like to truly do a project for human rights, why not look into the female genital mutilation, CFMG, that goes on in our culture today? There are thousands of girls across the country, perhaps hundreds or thousands right here in Minnesota and maybe even in Bloomington, that have been forcibly mutilated against their wishes. That would be a very good project to start with. Or how about the victims of communism that have fled other cultures and other countries to come here, and they have settled in our beautiful city of Bloomington to escape the evils of communism? Those are true human rights issues that I think everyone can get on board with. Thank you, and God bless you for your time.
Thank you for your call, Ms. Longo. Appreciate it. Ms. Wilson?
Alicia, do we have other callers for the public comment period, Agenda Item 4.2?
One moment. For our callers who want to ask a question, you may press star 1 on your telephone. Thank you. We have Dave Clark on the line.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Councilmembers. Tonight, I want to, thank you. Tonight, I want to address the Human Rights Commission, which was established in 1968 under the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Throughout the years, the Human Rights Commission has made a number of symbolic gestures, some with greater importance than others, but mostly benign and relatively non-controversial. There are actually time spans of 10 to 20 years between accomplishments listed on the website, but nonetheless, it's been a way for residents to weigh in on a number of measures. However, today, we find a very different Human Rights Commission in Bloomington, one who at the direction of the city council, was tasked to research the issue of conversion therapy. Through presentations in city council meetings and materials on the website, it is readily apparent that this issue was not researched in an unbiased manner. In fact, a radical agenda is evident in the presentation of the materials, and by the commission's own admission, the conclusions were arrived at without dissent. Now, I have no doubt that the commission worked hard on their presentation and that they're sincere in their beliefs, but the approach that the commission has taken toward this issue is one-sided and deeply flawed, and the city council and mayor seem to be taking it lock, stock, and barrel with very little questioning of the methodology. Furthermore, Ms. Bosu, in the January 25th council meeting at the two-hour and 20-minute, 21-minute mark in the YouTube video, said, and I quote, "There is no clear evidence that conversion therapy is being provided." She meant in Bloomington. Now, to be fair, Councilmember Lohman has expressed interest in having a more balanced approach in the research, but there seems to have been no effort to do so except for one slide in the March 1st meeting last Monday referencing the Minnesota Family Council. Councilmember Beloga has supported Mr. Lohman in that request, but it's ended there. Everyone else, councilmembers Coulter, Martin, Carter, Nelson, and Mayor Bussie, have already played their hands and supported the commission's findings, and therefore, all the debates and upcoming public hearing is a waste of time. You might as well vote tonight and spare us the condescension. We see what is happening, and this is quickly becoming an assault on parental and First Amendment rights. What started as civil penalties has already escalated into a civil-criminal two-step approach. Councilmember Coulter assured us on January 25th that there would be no intention of putting therapists out of business at the 1 hour and 50 minutes and 50 seconds on the YouTube video. A mere 34 days later, on March 1st, last Monday, Councilmember Nelson stated he wanted any therapist who practiced conversion therapy in Bloomington to lose their license with the state, putting them out of business and facing criminal prosecution. While the commission tried to assure the public that this would have no bearing on parents' rights, before the discussion was over last Monday, Mayor Bussie was already trying to find ways to assign culpability to parents who support conversion therapy. If conversion therapy can be deemed an abusive practice and parents support that therapy for their kids, then the natural consequences for child protection services to get involved and potentially remove the children from the home while an investigation occurs. That's what's going on here. The difference from the January 25th and March 1st council meetings was startling and reflected in escalation in language from the mayor and numerous councilmembers. What's going to be next? Banning all conversion therapy for all ages instead of just children and vulnerable adults? Removing the religious exemption for pastors, rabbis, priests, and imams? If from January 25th to March 1st, there's already been an escalation in the scope of this proposed ban, then how can we trust you over a longer period of time? If the Human Rights Commission is so concerned about children in our city, then I would like to have them begin an exhaustive study in Bloomington on Bloomington survivors of FGM, female genital mutilation. Or how about the effect of lockdowns on kids who have suffered abuse at home while the schools and churches were closed, but the liquor stores stayed open? And lastly, I'd like to see the Human Rights Commission, in the interest of protecting children, research Bloomington becoming a sanctuary city for the unborn. I will seek one councilmember to sponsor each of these three issues, as each of them impact children in our community. So if the concern here is for children, then each of these other issues should also be a priority, especially in an election year. Finally, I'd like to see the Human Rights Commission hold a virtual town hall in the next 10 days, so the community can directly address them and their methodology on the conversion therapy ban. This could be done in lieu of the upcoming March 16th meeting, when the commission meets next. Mr. Verbrugge, I look forward to your follow-up on each of these requests and your opening comments next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Appreciate your comments.
Alicia, do we have additional callers for the public comment period?
We don't have any more callers at this time. Thank you.
Alicia, could you make, could you make one final check, please? One final call?
Alicia, can you hear me?
We don't have any more callers, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
No more callers. Thank you.
No more callers. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you much. With that, we will close this evening's public comment period. Appreciate everybody who called in and offered their opinion. We'll move on to Item 5 on our agenda, which is our introductory items, and Item 5.1, which is the annual report and the 2021-2022 work plan of our Advisory Board of Health. I'd like to welcome right now our Chair of our Advisory Board of Health, Megan Whittit, and I believe Dr. Nick Kelly is going to join us as well. Good evening to both, and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and city councilmembers. Thank you so much for having me this evening and providing an opportunity for me to share with you all of the great work that the Advisory Board of Health has done over the last year and what we're particularly looking forward to in the coming year. I want to start off to just check in to see if Nick would like to make any comments before I begin the presentation.
I'm good. Thank you, Megan.
Sure. Thanks, Nick. And I also, before I begin, I'll just also mention that we did pause our Advisory Board of Health meetings for a few months with COVID-19, and we were excited to get back to our meetings virtually when we were able to do so, so that was really exciting. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and start the presentation, and I'm also going to put my video on, and you can see me, if you can, in case you'd like to. All right, so thanks again, and good evening, and I'm going to begin today's presentation with just a very brief overview of some of the work that we have done over the last year. The city has started, the board has started with learning about the racial equity business plan and provided feedback and support towards declaring racism as a public health crisis. We also learned about the important work that is happening with our partners at Oasis and Bridging and all of the work they're doing with the community. Particularly, we're able to learn about how these groups have pivoted during the COVID-19 pandemic while also providing quality services to our community members. We had several updates on the Lindell Avenue retrofit project, where the board was interested in learning more about the walkability and the affordability that was highlighted in the plan. And we also had a great information session on the public health communication plan, where they shared with us the intent of the division's communications to share local information and to keep messages simple and the content personal. The current focus will be to help really build the community's confidence in the COVID-19 vaccine, and their plan to do, the plan is to do this through a variety of educational We also had continued conversations around the tobacco policy work. We learned that based on the surveys in the multi-unit housing, that two out of three non-smokers reported being exposed to secondhand smoke and through their own units. And the board participated, as you may recall, at the June study session relating to tobacco point-of-sale policies and multi-unit housing policy work. And we're really looking forward to these continued conversations and work in 2021. We also had a lot of great information shared with the board around the aging well work being done in Bloomington. So rather than focusing on only dementia, aging well takes a broader look at all aspects of aging, including social isolation. They found that older adults were interested in knowing more about what resources existed as they age, including how to get around, how to stay active, how to remain social, as well as what information they would need to live on a fixed income, around affordable housing, as well as what home services were available to them. And the staff continues to work on ways to ensure that the residents have all this important information, and this took on a greater importance and a greater significance with We also were able to learn about the important about the important issues affecting our community members through the Community Health Survey. This included areas such as mental health, nutrition, chronic conditions, as well as access to and affordability of healthcare. And this really reinforced the number of health disparities that we know to exist within our community. Particularly, we learned about how minority races and Hispanics, as well as those who rent versus own their homes, those who have more significant housing insecurity and lower income, as well as disabilities, all generally reported poor physical and mental health. They reported worse health behaviors and less access to healthcare. So again, this really reinforced the number of disparities that exist within Bloomington, but also really reinforced why racism is indeed a public health crisis in Bloomington. Every year, we have the opportunity to also learn about the important work that the Environmental Health Department is doing around foodborne disease trends and all the work they're doing to really keep the community safe while eating in Bloomington. While the most common type of outbreak continues to be the norovirus, the outbreaks investigated by the Bloomington Environmental Health in 2019 included two related, but different bacterial infections. Also, we continue to learn about the important work that's happening in Bloomington around COVID-19. The board learned about the disproportionate impact that COVID-19 is having on our people of color in our community and the different phases of the response that the Bloomington Public Health staff are doing and are undertaking and continue to undertake in response to COVID-19. And so these briefings are now a regular part of our ongoing work on the board. In addition to the work that's happening around COVID-19 in response to Bloomington, we also were able to have an opportunity to learn more about what Hennepin County is doing in response to COVID-19 and the homeless population. Specifically, we were able to learn about the success in preventing COVID-19 in the homeless population through housing in hotels and also the additional efforts being taken to really find that stable housing for individuals during the pandemic. I'm now going to switch gears and just share a little bit about what we're looking forward to as a board in 2021. We continue to, as I mentioned, receive the updates on COVID-19 from public health and will continue to provide the important feedback on their response to COVID-19. We also look forward to the updates on the work we are doing in the city to address the health crisis that is caused by racism in the city. And we're looking forward to the updates around the health and all policies work that is moving forward in the city of Bloomington. As I mentioned, we continue to look at the tobacco policy options to improve health. Particularly, the board will continue to monitor the progress to protect our youth from smoking initiation and also to protect our community from the health impacts of secondhand smoke. And again, we look forward to those continued conversations in the coming year. We're also looking forward to the continued monitoring of the emerging issues that are impacting the community and our residents. Particularly, the board's interested in identifying what are some of the emerging health issues that are coming out of the other as we get to the other side of the pandemic. We look forward to receiving the updates from our community partners and staff on these health issues that are facing the community. And particularly, we're interested in learning more about some of the work and the challenges that our community partners base as they work within our community and with our Bloomington residents. So that concludes the presentation for this evening. I know I went through that fairly quickly. Be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have. And I want to thank you very much for your time this evening.
And thank you for your time and effort, Ms. Whittit. Appreciate your work with the Advisory Board of Health and your willingness to take on the role of Chair. That's greatly appreciated. So thanks much for that. And if you could also extend to the rest of the members of the Advisory Board of Health our thanks to them as well, because I know that they put in a lot of work and it's an active and hard-working board. So thank you so very much to them.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions of Chair Whittit regarding her presentation this evening or any of the work of the Advisory Board of Health? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was just curious, are any of the board members going to be involved in the strategic planning for the racial equity strategic planning that we approved as part of the declaration?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Carter. That's a great question. And there were certainly some conversations and interest from the board members at the time of having the conversation and move forward with the strategic planning. And there was a lot of interest from the board to be actively involved in that strategic planning process. As you may be aware, we do have quite a transition happening here in March with the new board members coming on board. So I think it'll be important to have that conversation with our new board members coming on and determining what role the board can have, whether it be strategic or additional feedback or information that we can have as a part of that work moving forward. So I will look forward to having that conversation with the new board members coming on to identify what some of that role and what that role could specifically look like.
Thank you. That makes total sense to me. Thanks for all your work on this and to all the board members, of course.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just wanted to just, more of a comment, just wanted to... The health and all policies is, I think, a fantastic thing. And just as I think about back to my history of living here in Bloomington and how much really, you know, Chair and Mayor, you know, the focus that our city has had on health. And so it's great to see that this policy will be moving forward. And I guess if I had one question, would we be looking to reach out to other groups, such for example, the school board or other entities within the city to try to get them on board as I've seen in other efforts?
Thank you so much for that question, Councilmember. And I think that, again, it's also a great comment and a question. I would, first of all, agree with your comment, the health and all policies work that, you know, was spearheaded from the state and brought, I think, throughout the state is really important. And it's great to see that moving forward in Bloomington. I think your question about how that work is moving forward and whether there's some specific components, whether it be the schools, you know, within the school board or other, you know, departments and entities within Bloomington and how that can move forward, I think is a really great point and one that I will be interested in identifying how that's going to be moved forward more specifically as that happens and as we get those updates as the Advisory Board of Health. So I want to, I'll certainly want to make a note of that. And I think that's a great question to ask the staff and as we continue to have the conversations on how that's moving forward, to see what that looks like. So I would agree with your question. I guess I would have a similar question and will look to try to get more of an update on that as we get more updates on the board on how that work is moving forward. So thank you for that.
Counsel, any additional questions? Hearing none. Counsel, I'd look for action. We do need to accept their annual report and the work plan of the Advisory Board of Health.
I'd be happy to do that, Mayor.
Councilmember Carter?
Great. I move to accept the Advisory Board of Health's 2020-2021 annual report and approve the 2021-2022 work plan as presented.
Second, Coulter?
Got a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Coulter to accept the Advisory Board of Health's annual report and their 2021-2022 work plan. Hearing no further discussion by the council? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Hi.
Carter?
Hi.
Coulter?
Hi.
Loman?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Mayor Bussie?
Hi. Motion carries 7-0. Once again, Chair Whittit, thank you very much for your work. And if you could, as I said earlier, pass our thanks on to the rest of the Advisory Board of Health and welcome your new member as your new members come on board in March. I know it'll be an exciting change for the board and look forward to see the work that the Advisory Board of Health will be accomplishing this year. So thank you much.
Thank you so much, Mayor and council members again. Really appreciate all your support and I too am looking forward to all the great work with the new members as well. Thanks again.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Next on our agenda is item six, our consent agenda. Councilmember Coulter has tonight's consent business. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a hold on item 6.8 and I'm just going to do one last check in case there was anything that anyone missed.
I'd like to hold 6.11, please.
I also like to hold 6.1 and 6.9.
Okay. So I have, just to clarify, I have 6.1, 6.8, 6.9, and 6.11. And I'm not seeing anybody else jump to raise their hand virtually or otherwise. So in that case, I will move items 6.2 through 6.7 and 6.10. I think that's long.
Second.
We've got a motion to accept tonight's consent business as stated. Motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Beloga. Hearing no further council discussion? Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Hi.
Carter?
Hi.
Coulter?
Hi.
Loman?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Mayor Bussie?
Hi. Motion carries 7-0. So maybe we should go back and pick these off one by one in order, maybe starting with item 6.1. I believe that was Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, Mayor. I held that because I just thought the broader community should know what's going on here. Significant change here with respect or has the potential for change within our fire department in terms of how it operates and works. And then I also had a question for staff in terms of if this particular grant does not go through, is there a backup plan? So I'm not sure if staff wants to kind of talk about this a little bit or kind of give a little bit of introduction to it.
Why don't we? I know that we've got Chief Seal loading on here, but as he's coming on, why don't we turn it over to Mr. Verbrugghe very quick to answer a couple of the questions and kick it over to Chief Seal after that? Mr. Verbrugghe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, just want to make sure that folks who are watching know what this item is. This is a request for the council to support a grant application. It's called the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant Program through FEMA, the SAFER Grant. And it is for funding of firefighter, full-time firefighter positions. So I want to make sure that folks know what the topic is. And at this point, So I want to make sure that folks know what the topic is. And at this point, if Chief Seal is available, uh, have him talk about, uh, what is intended with the use of these grant funds and, uh, responses to Councilmember Loman's, uh, questions about, um, options that may exist.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. I do see Chief Seal is ready to go. Good evening, Chief Seal. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Happy to answer your questions. Um, the, uh, uh, direct question to Councilmember Loman is what's our Plan B? If, if A, the council, um, decides not to, uh, um, want us to apply, or B, if we get turned down or, or don't actually, uh, aren't actually successful in getting a grant. Um, we are working with our, um, or going to be working with our, uh, uh, current paid-on-call firefighters and our current career staff, um, to look at ways to do a better job of providing service to, to our citizens. So we're going to constitute a working group here, um, somewhere in the near future, um, to, um, examine those ways to not only provide better service to our customers. One second. Provide, prevent, uh, better service to come, uh, to our customers, but also, um, better service, um, around the clock, twenty-four hours. So we're, we're going to be looking at that irregardless of what happens with the SAFER Grant. Any other questions or anything anybody has?
Councilmember Loman, did that answer your questions?
That certainly answered my question, and I think we gave a good, uh, uh, and I know there'll be more to come on this, uh, but I'll, I'll be, uh, be excited to see how this, uh, works and the transition takes place. I know we're doing this, uh, with a customer as the center point of, of this particular, uh, change. So, um, and I appreciate the, uh, the words of, uh, the chief there. And I'd be happy to move this, uh, if, uh, if there are no other questions.
Let me see if there are any other questions by the council. Councilmember Beloga, I see your hand up. And Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chief Seal, good evening. Thanks for, uh, joining us. Uh, I see this grant is for a three-year period and it's roughly, uh, uh, aggregate in around the seven to eight million dollar range. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, by our calculations, it's probably closer to six, but it is an aggregate for those three years. In the past, the SAFER Grant has been a graduated, um, reduction over the three-year period, um, of how much they are awarding. But this year, um, due to, um, COVID nineteen, they are basically, um, not requiring a match on the part of the city. So the entire cost is covered, um, for those positions for the three-year period.
And, uh, can you give, uh, our residents who are listening in tonight, uh, why this is important to response times? And, uh, what occurs at the end of this three-year grant period?
Sure. Um, what we have found, um, and what was found as part of our fire services assessment, was that our response times currently from the time, um, um, from the time the nine-one-one call gets picked up until the time our fire apparatus arrive at the scene, is basically too long if we're looking at, at what, uh, a standard should be applied to a city of our size and our population. And that, that timeframe was about nine minutes and thirty-nine seconds. Um, there were two ways to reduce that. One was, um, through dispatch call handling, which we have recently automated and, and, and created a significant reduction in the time that the, uh, um, call handling was being done in dispatch. Um, and, um, the second was the time it takes to get the trucks en route out of the station. So for majority of the day, our firefighters are responding based upon a tone they get or a call they get on a pager. They respond to the station, get on the trucks and get the truck out, out the door of the station. Um, and that, that is a, a, an increased response time. And that timeframe is about four plus minutes. It's over four minutes for us to get the trucks out of the station. That's our, our ninety percent mark. And we're, we're, um, concerned because that adds to that nine-minute time. We'd like to knock, um, two and a half minutes off of that. The only real way to do that is to have people in the station ready to respond. The other issue that, um, is paramount for us is the number of people we're, we're, we, we have on trucks or we're getting on trucks. And that number right now is, is, um, lower than we'd like. We are rolling more, um, trucks to more calls with one or two firefighters on them, uh, on those trucks. And, and we'd like to have at least three on the trucks that we roll. So those are the two items that have prompted, um, some change. Well, what the other probably major driving force as far as looking at career positions is that, um, we're continuing to struggle, um, to get enough, um, qualified candidates for our paid-on-call positions. Now, we're going to open up, or we opened up today, another hiring, um, um, for our paid-on-call positions in which we're hoping to, to get ten, um, new applicants or ten new, uh, recruits out of, um, this year. Um, and that's been slowed down a bit this year just because of COVID, but we're hoping to start that class in the fall. Um, the position's opened up, um, today and they'll close, um, in the first week of April, April eighth or, or ninth, if I remember correctly. Um, and which we will run a process, a hiring process to hire ten more paid-on-call firefighters as well. Our current number right now is a hundred and seven, and we're going to continue to work to get that number up. Um, but at, uh, at the heart of the problem is the time it takes to get firefighters down to the station and get the trucks out. So we're looking at different ways to provide service on the part of our firefighters as well as, um, supplementing, sorry about that, call coming in, supplementing our, uh, our response with more career firefighters. We have eight right now and we're looking to add some more.
So, uh, Chief Seal, if I, uh, uh, read you correctly, this is, uh, a great benefit to the residents and businesses in Bloomington because it's going to increase the response time, which is particularly important because what, uh, fire doubles every minute that it goes unattended. Is that, uh, what I understand?
Yeah, in today's fire environment, fire propagates very quickly. And, um, it really is a function of how much oxygen is available. But because of all the synthetics in our, in our current fire environment, fire propagates very quickly to the point now where, um, if, um, even if you have smoke detectors in your home, if the very old or the very young will struggle to get out in time. And I would say, the only, um, thing I would say that is a little different from what you said is, is we want to decrease our response time and get to the scene faster.
Uh, thanks for that correction.
The other thing that you, you brought up, I, I do want to make a point of is, is that this will have a budget impact in, at the end of three years' time. Because at the end of three years, when the grant, um, closes, the costs of whoever we hire will be borne then by the, by the city. However, we are looking at a long-term, um, fire response plan to be able to provide response to the city in a, in a efficient, um, and, and fast way, and, and this is part of it.
Uh, thank you, Chief Seal and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Counsel, any additional questions on item six point one? I see no hands up. So Councilmember Loman, if you'd like to move this, you are welcome to.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the fire department to apply for a SAFER Grant. If selected for an award, the item would return to the council for approval to accept the award.
Beloga, second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Beloga to approve item six point one on our consent business as stated. Hearing no further discussion by the council. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman? Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Like to move to item, uh, six point eight. And I believe that was Councilmember Beloga held up. Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I did. And what I wanted to, uh, highlight this item for is, is, uh, uh, this is, uh, this item is to approve a letter of support for the twenty-twenty-one INFRA discretionary grant. And it's with the intention of, uh, increasing funding from outside sources, uh, this case to federal government for the, uh, rebuild and reconstruction of I-94 between one sixty-nine and the airport. Uh, what, uh, this allows us to do is, is, uh, we currently, for that entire project, have a significant shortfall in funding. Uh, the state has provided two hundred and forty-two million dollars, uh, quarters of commerce money. But, uh, that is, uh, a fraction of what is needed. And, uh, to move this project forward to conclusion in its many parts, uh, it's a, uh, six-phase project at this time, uh, requires additional, uh, funding. And, uh, I think we're all pleased that, uh, the state of Minnesota has initiated this, uh, to the federal government for that support, which, uh, we feel has a, uh, better opportunity than not to be approved. So, um, with that, those are my comments. And I don't know if, uh, Carl Keel had any comments or anyone else had comments or questions on this item.
Counsel, any additional questions on item six point eight? Mr. Keel, anything to add to this one?
No, Mayor. I think Councilmember Beloga follow, uh, summarized it quite well.
I would agree, and I would, uh, echo Councilmember Beloga's, uh, sentiment that, uh, uh, appreciate the state looking for additional money on this, uh, because we, we have identified the need for it and, uh, appreciate that they're the ones taking the, uh, uh, initiative on this and trying to find additional funding for this project. So counsel, I see no additional hands. So Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to, uh, uh, I moved the letter, uh, I move approval of the letter of support, uh, for the twenty-twenty-one INFRA discretionary grant.
Second, Martin.
And a motion by Councilmember Beloga and a second by Councilmember Martin to approve item six point eight on our consent business as stated. Hearing no further comments from the council. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Item six point nine, I believe, again, that was at, uh, Councilmember Loman, I believe?
Yeah, that, uh, certainly, Mayor, was, uh, an item that I held. Uh, this item is in, um, in regards to the Hearn Sixth Street, uh, uh, project, uh, that's taking place there. The project includes a reconstruction of the west of Hearn Sixth Street, uh, uh, between Lindale Avenue and, uh, Verde Road. And reconstruction will facilitate, uh, the realignment of the road at the new, uh, width that will allow room for travel, lanes on the road, bike lanes, boulevards, uh, separate trails and sidewalks, and improvements, uh, just generally, uh, to that, that area. Uh, I, I wanted to hold this for a couple of different reasons. Um, one, I wanted to acknowledge that there was a, uh, a, a group, um, uh, organized group of that area that, that was opposed to a certain section of this. And I wanted to just, uh, note that those residents, uh, that staff worked extremely hard to, to hear what they had, uh, um, uh, their concerns about the closure of, of, uh, a road there. They'd come back to council, uh, a couple of different times for us to have those conversations. And I wanted to just acknowledge and just thank those residents for bringing that forward. And I also wanted to thank our staff, uh, for the hard work that they have done, uh, on this project. Um, this is a significant project, uh, to, to bring in, uh, safety, uh, for our residents that are traveling through that, uh, corridor. Um, and, uh, also, uh, with the assistance and the help that they have, uh, received by bringing, uh, dollars in from other entities, uh, across the state. So I just, as a, as a council member, one of the things that I know I've wanted to see change ever since I've, I've gotten here was this work here on a hundred and sixth street. And I just want to just, uh, wholly say thank you to our staff, uh, for their hard and tireless work on putting this project through.
Counsel, anything to add to Councilmember Loman's comments? If not, uh, Councilmember Loman, there, there are three different motions that are rolled into item six point nine. But if you would just, uh, if you would be willing to move just item six point nine as stated, uh, I don't know that we have to go through each and vote on each.
I'd be happy to, to make that motion as it, the motions are stated for six point nine for the approval plans, uh, and specifications for West Hearn Sixth Street project as listed in the, uh, uh, in the agenda back.
Second, Beloga.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Beloga to accept item six point nine on the consent business. And that includes, as I mentioned, three specific motions, uh, approved plans, adopt the resolution, uh, enter into agreements, and, uh, to support a local road improvement program application. Counsel, any additional questions or comments on this? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. And our final item, item six point eleven, uh, Councilmember Loman, I believe this was you as well. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Carter, I apologize.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so I just wanted to make, uh, or ask for a modification. So in item five point two, it says, uh, Carter asked if staff has thought about considering removing lifeguards from Bush Lake Beach. And I just want to clarify that that decision was made in the budget process last year for twenty-twenty, that lifeguards were removed. Um, and that I had been asking about, um, whether or not staff had considered working with Three Rivers Park District to operate the beach and potentially provide lifeguards. So just want to make, uh, ask for those modifications to be reflected in the record.
All right. Do we have that officially recorded in the record? Or I'm sure we can get back to it and record it in the record as appropriate? Does anyone have any comments or questions on that?
Mayor Bussie, I would just like to call out, um, that the incorrect date of the minutes were also listed. Um, and I've made the corrections. And so when the fallout packet will be published, please, um, move to approve the minutes from February eighth instead of January twenty-fifth. January twenty-fifth was already approved.
All right. Everybody clear on the two corrections this evening? If so, Councilmember Carter, do you want to move approval of this?
Yes, I can do that. Um, so I would move to approve the minutes of the, now I'm blinking. What did you say, February?
February eighth.
February eighth. Eighth. Twenty-twenty-one City Council Regular Business Meeting, um, with the modification that I asked for. And the date changed.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Martin to approve the meeting minutes of the City Council, item six point eleven, without changes as indicated. Hearing no further council discussion on this. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. With that, let's move to item seven on our agenda, which is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And item seven point one is a public hearing regarding a comprehensive, excuse me, a comprehensive plan text amendment to a medium-density residential. And Mr. Palermo from our planning department is going to lead us through this. Good evening, Mr. Palermo. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Can everyone see my screen all right?
I think we're good to go.
All right. Uh, tonight, uh, I'll be presenting on a medium-density residential comprehensive plan text amendment. This is a privately initiated comprehensive plan amendment. Uh, to give you a little context and history, the, the applicant, uh, owns the property at four-two-two-three West Old Chocopee Road. Uh, they intend to subdivide this lot and create, uh, a second single-family home. Uh, the issue became apparent that this property is guided medium-density residential, and our single-family homes don't quite meet that threshold of density. A little more history, in the nineteen-eighty comprehensive plan, the, the area was guided high-density residential. And after about twenty years of not a whole lot of movement on the, that area, it was re-guided to medium-density residential in the twen- in the two thousand comprehensive plan. So, uh, as I alluded to, the, the issue is that medium-density residential in our comprehensive plan states that these are properties with five units per acre or more. So to get to five units per acre or more, you would need a minimum lot size or a maximum lot size of eight thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet. Uh, but our single-family home, our R-one zoning district, requires a minimum lot size of eleven thousand square feet. And that amounts to about three point nine-six units per acre, so lower than that five unit per acre threshold. So if you were to subdivide the lot, we wouldn't meet that five units per acre while meeting our zoning requirements. So it's a little bit easier when you look at the actual property. Uh, this is the property, it, it's on Old Chocopee Road, but it's a through lot that also fronts on West a hundred and eighth street, a local road. You can see the area around it is all zoned R-one, our single-family zoning district. And you can see this area is, is guided medium-density residential. The applicant proposed that, uh, we allow, uh, a lower density in the medium-density residential, qualified with a few, um, uh, I guess, performance standards, we would say. So the original, uh, proposed amendment, we kind of tweaked it a little as staff. And then you can see here in red, it was tweaked again by the Planning Commission. So it would read, "In locations where existing or newly created lots, uh, local street, along the local street and have single-family dwellings on both sides of the property, a single-family home is allowed at below five units per acre, provided the net density does not decrease." So the staff is in support of this for a couple of reasons. One, it's narrowly focused. We're keeping in that neighborhood character. So the property is along a local street, so not a, a arterial collector, which are multi, are more dense buildings that are typically located along. And it also has to have that single family on both sides. So again, keeping in nature with the street that already exists. Uh, we also kind of looked around to see if there's other situations that this could occur. It seems to be a unique situation. It's kind of hard to really identify, uh, if there's another spot. But just kind of looking through our median areas that are guided medium-density, we did not see another similar situation. So this might be, uh, a unique situation. But we can also hypothetically see a situation where, uh, someone purchases the lot next to them, tears down a house. They never actually combined the lot because they can't because it's medium-density. Sells that lot off years later. Well, you can't build a single-family home and that lot sits empty. So this would kind of be a little bit of a relief valve in those, again, very rare hypothetical situations. And then adding that provision that the Planning Commission's that, with net density cannot decrease. So in this case, we're still moving that needle towards a denser area. And it doesn't really eliminate the possibility for future redevelopment. You know, if you're doing that one lot, if there's already existing lots on both sides, uh, uh, it's keeping in that nature and it's, it's not that, uh, the difficulty for developing at that higher density, i- it's not going to preclude that development in the future. I apologize, I have kids in the background that hopefully you, you aren't hearing bleed through. Um, so with that, I'm here to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor, council members, um, and there's a motion on the screen if needed.
Counsel, any questions? I guess I do have one, Mr. Palermo. I mean, does it, does it concern you at all to, to be changing the comprehensive plan for one specific circumstance here?
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, it, it was privately initiated, but, uh, it doesn't really concern too much as it's still kind of keeping in that nature. Like I said, the, it does kind of provide a relief valve in some unique situations that might pop up in the future. We have this kind of relationship between zoning and land use that this kind of, uh, happens from time to time. So I think it was one of those situations that has been there, but just hasn't come up. And the fact that it's come up, it warrants addressing now in the, the comp plan.
And you said in your review, there, this is, uh, th- this is a unique situation. There's not, there's not others that you found within your, currently that you found within your, your review of the, uh, rest of the city?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, it, you know, it's, it's not like I can do it, an analysis in GIS and find one, but I, I looked fairly closely and I couldn't find a comparable situation.
Thank you. Counsel, additional questions? Seeing none. This is a public hearing, and at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on item seven point one, which is a comprehensive plan text amendment to medium-density residential. With the public hearing open, Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item seven point one?
Mr. Mayor, we were expecting the applicant, so I'm just going to check with the caller on our WebEx and see if that happens to be our applicant.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi.
Questions for me?
Would you identify yourself for the council, please?
Jill Fairchild.
Good evening, Ms. Fairchild. Welcome. Thanks for being here this evening. So you're the applicant in this, uh, in this item?
Yes.
I, I, I believe Mr. Mr. Palermo did a nice job, uh, laying this all out. Is there anything that you would add to his presentation or any additional information you could provide for the council on this or not?
Um, no, I guess, um, he did a really good job at the Planning Commission and it seems like he, he gave you guys all the information you needed.
I agree. I thought.
I don't have any other questions.
Good presentation. Counsel, do we have any, uh, questions of, of our applicant this evening? If not, we are still, is part of the public hearing. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone other than the applicant on the line who wishes to speak to item seven point one?
Uh, one moment, please. Alicia, this is Chris. Do we have any callers for agenda item seven point one?
Yes, we have Dave Higgins. Your line is now open if you would like to ask a question.
Good evening.
Mr. Higgins, are you calling for seven point one or seven point two?
I apologize. I'm actually, uh, jumped the gun, I guess. I'm calling for seven point two.
All right, we'll be back with you in a few minutes then. Alicia, do we have any other callers for seven point one?
No more callers, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Martin to close our public hearing on item seven point We've got a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Martin to close our public hearing on item seven point one. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Paluga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero to close the public hearing on item seven point one. Counsel, any additional questions on this or concerns, comments? Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, this, obviously, this is a sort of one-off example, but I just, I think this is a really great example of the kind of flexibility in zoning that we're going to need to see moving forward to address needs. You know, I think this makes sense from sort of every perspective. And I just really want to thank staff for bringing this forward and encourage this kind of creativity as we think about zoning and re-guiding and that kind of thing. And if there are no other comments, I'm happy to make the motion.
Let me make one final call here. Counsel, anything additional to add?
Just a second, Mayor.
Councilmember Loman, do you have a question?
No, I just have, the only thing I'd add is a second to his motion.
Oh, just a second. I mistook what you were saying there. I apologize. Councilmember Coulter, a motion, please.
And Mr. Mayor, in case PL twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash one, I will move to adopt a resolution to accept a comprehensive plan text amendment as revised in the packet, allowing single-family dwellings in the medium-density residential designation, subject to performance standards.
Now, you're on, Councilmember Loman.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Loman on item seven point one, which is comprehensive plan text amendments. Counsel, any additional questions, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Paluga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Palermo. Haven't seen you in a while. Thank you much for this and bringing it forward. And thank you to our applicant. Glad we could get to a good resolution here. And I agree with Councilmember Coulter. This looks like a creative way to get things done in a variety of different ways. So, thanks much for doing that. Thanks also to Ms. Wilson for doing a little traffic copying earlier and helping us make sure that everybody was in the right place at the right time. With that, let's move to item seven point two on our agenda, which is another public hearing. This one is on our Opportunity Housing Ordinance Amendments. And I'd like to call in right now our administrator of our Housing and Redevelopment Authority, Erica Coleman. Good evening, Ms. Coleman. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. I will go ahead and share my screen as I will be doing this presentation with Mr. Markegard of Planning. Thank you, Mayor. Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator, here to talk about the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and proposed amendments. To provide just a little bit of background, in twenty eighteen, there were studies to develop incentives for the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. And in February twenty-fifth of twenty nineteen, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance was first adopted, after which we continued six-month period of education and refinement and amended First Amendment August fifth, twenty nineteen, and in full effect, September of twenty nineteen. Since its enactment, there have been continued education and outreach with the development community. The Opportunity Housing Ordinance is designed to encourage onsite production of affordable housing units and preserve existing affordable units while not creating undue constraints to the financial viability of new market rate housing developments. And I just wanted to highlight the income limits in which we use, which is established by HUD. And as you can see, for a family of four, an extremely low income of thirty-one thousand dollars is considered at thirty percent AMI, extremely low income. Staff is proposing various amendments to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. Updates will impact how development applications are processed and how the city applies the requirements of the code. The recommended changes are for new incentives, modifications to existing incentives, and/or procedures, and minor edits and clarifications. Mr. Markegard of Planning will provide an overview of the recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Good evening, Mayor Bussey, councilmembers. If you could have that next slide, please. So, Bloomington's Opportunity Housing Ordinance requires affordability, but it also provides significant incentives to the developers as well. These range from density, heights, parking, and many others. And if we can have the next slide. So, tonight, we're talking about several modifications to the incentives. All of the incentives highlighted in orange, we have some enhancements proposed. And then we have four new incentives as well, which I'll speak to. Next slide, please. So, our objectives with these modifications is to further incentivize affordable housing. And we're really focused on the fifty percent AMI band and below. We've had seven projects to date that have come through under the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and two more in process. And we've seen significant progress in the sixty percent AMI band. But we do want to do whatever we can to try to get more production at the fifty and thirty percent bands. And then, secondly, we've learned a lot in the last year and a half, and several of the changes are based on that. Next slide. So, in terms of applicability, currently, the requirements and incentives kick in with projects that have twenty or more units. The ordinance before you tonight would allow projects with nineteen or fewer units to utilize the incentives. They would still be exempt from the requirements, but they would have the ability to opt in and provide affordability. And through that, they would receive the incentives. And this would be at that city council discretion. That would not be mandatory either for the developer or for the council. So, some examples of what that may entail would be smaller multifamily buildings, but also townhome projects or single-family subdivisions. Next slide. So, I'll talk a little bit about the four new incentives proposed tonight. And they are really meant to make smaller sites more viable or feasible for development. As an example, on the screen is eighty-twelve Old Cedar Avenue South. So, a one-point-two-acre site currently occupied by a small office building. We received an application last week for sixty-eight units on the site. But it runs into difficulties with various issues, including site area, site width, impervious surface, and open space. To make this more viable, this site and some others in the city, we're proposing some new incentives that target really the fifty and thirty percent AMI bands. Next slide. So, the first new incentive has to do with site area. The city has standards for minimum site area that vary by zoning district. And so, we're proposing an incentive, and that incentive would vary from ten percent to a fifty percent reduction depending on the level of affordability that's proposed. Next slide. Similar to that, site width. Very by zoning district. And here again, we're proposing reductions of up to fifty percent. Again, with the highest reduction targeting that thirty percent and below band. Next slide. So, site width and site area interrelate with impervious surface and open space standards. Here again, these standards vary by zoning district. And the proposed incentive would allow between five to ten percent more of the site to be impervious, depending on affordability level. I would point out that stormwater standards would continue to apply. Any development would need to meet the stormwater standards, whether they're city or watershed district standards. Next slide. And then for open space, Bloomington requires a certain amount of open space per unit with credits for things like balconies, and that varies by zoning district. Again, the proposed reduction is between ten and fifty percent, depending on affordability level. And next slide. So, those were the four new incentives. And then now we have some changes to existing incentives. So, for height, currently, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, for any project that provides at least nine percent of the units at sixty percent AMI or below, the incentive is that they can receive one additional story in height, but only if the height map allows three or more stories. The proposed change would be to allow one additional story regardless of the height map. So, the effective change is that a two-story limitation could be increased to three stories if affordability is provided. Next slide. In terms of parking, this is probably our most heavily used and most valuable incentive. And currently, the incentive ranges from ten to forty percent, depending on reduction, depending on the affordability level, but also on the availability of transit in the vicinity. And the proposed incentive would keep all of the existing reductions in place, but would propose an even greater reduction, so a reduction of fifty percent near transit or twenty-five percent away from transit if the development can provide twenty percent of the units at fifty percent AMI or less. Next slide. And Bloomington requires enclosed parking for multifamily developments that are not age-restricted. And the requirement is one enclosed parking space per dwelling unit. Currently, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance has two carport spaces. That's a significant cost savings, and that varies based on affordability level. The proposed change would be to allow conversion of enclosed spaces to fully unenclosed, so no carport involved at all. This is a ordinance, which was the Windale Flats, a development at ninety-fourth and Windale. And there, they sought additional flexibility to not have the carports. And given that the city council approved that flexibility, we're proposing this change just to allow fully unenclosed spaces as the incentive. And then we're also proposing a more dramatic incentive, which is allowing one hundred percent of the unenclosed spaces or enclosed spaces to be converted to unenclosed if twenty percent of the units are provided at fifty percent or lower. Next slide. And then for alternative materials, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance allows facades that do not face a street to use less expensive materials if affordability is provided. And with this change, we're simply proposing to add one additional material to the list of eligible materials, namely engineered wood. And next slide. And this is our last proposed incentive modification. Bloomington currently has a standard that non-age-restricted multifamily developments must have ninety-six cubic feet of lockable storage per unit outside of the unit itself. And that number is higher if there's no dedicated bicycle storage on site. This was last reviewed with the council in twenty fifteen when we updated our multifamily housing standards. And at that time, the council wanted, there was some discussion whether we should have the standard. And at that time, the council wanted to keep it in place. We've heard from developers that these units are not necessarily always used. And we found that usage levels really depend on the price charged. And some developments, there's free, there's no cost to utilize them, and they're more heavily used. And then other developments, there is a price charge. And the demand for usage is definitely lower in that case. So, next slide. So, currently, the incentive allows up to fifty percent reduction in the storage units if affordability is provided, nine percent at sixty percent AMI or below. So, the proposed change would allow an even greater reduction in storage units, up to seventy-five percent reduction for developments that provide a higher level of affordability. So, again, twenty percent of the units at fifty percent AMI or below. So, at this point, I'll turn it back to Ms. Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Markegard. And so, in addition to those, we do have some minor modifications to nine point oh four, which is definitions. So, this is aligning better with state and federal funding. Nine point oh nine, payment in lieu of affordable units. So, that the payment should, for the in lieu of affordable units, should go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, this is clarifying that that will happen. Nine point two five, development fee reimbursement. It clarifies, again, that the fee would be deposited into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Nine point two seven, expedited review of plans. And just clarifying that the expedited review means applications move to the front of the review queue. Additionally, nine point two nine, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This would be a new section under the incentive section because the trust fund is considered an incentive, but references the more detailed Affordable Housing Trust Fund section later in the chapter. Nine point three two, Affordable Housing Plan requirements. Just clarifying that the Community Development Director must make a recommendation to the city council to approve. And nine point three six, objectives. Clarifying that that dispersion also means a mix of affordable units by bedroom size, not only that units are mixed throughout the development. I just want to highlight the outreach and engagement that has been done. A notice of the public hearing on the proposed amendments to the city code was published in the official newspaper, which is the Sun Country, or excuse me, the Sun Current. Excuse me. Notice was also sent via email to one thousand seven hundred and three people who have registered for the Planning Commission e-subscribe group. On February ninth, the HRA Board of Commissioners unanimously approved or recommended approval of the ordinance modifications. On February twenty-fifth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for the proposed amendments, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance. The changes were presented to the Bloomington Housing Action Team, better known as the B-HECT, which is a community engagement group focused on housing strategies. They heard the proposed amendments to the OHO, and they were in favor of them. They just had a few clarifying questions around transit and larger units, nothing that had to impact the proposed changes. And then a virtual public comment information session with developers was held. In addition, the proposed amendments were also posted on the city website prior to today's public hearing. On December twenty-first, the city council did adopt a resolution to approve the issuance of revenue obligation bonds related to the proposed transit-oriented project at eighty-twelve Old Cedar. This proposed project is an affordable housing development consisting of a four-story, sixty-eight-unit building. And it was awarded the bond allocation in mid-January. And so, where this project currently stands is that without these amendments being approved at this time, this project would not be able to move forward and does And does run the risk of the project not happening in a decent time, actually, with other implications. And then currently, the code contains requirements that do not allow higher density on smaller sites. And so the recommended changes would incentivize further projects that allow for more affordability. I am available to stand for any additional, any questions, and this also is a public hearing, so I will wait for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman, and thank you, Mr. Markard for the presentation. Council questions, I do have a couple of quick questions. First of all, thank you for outlining the engagement efforts that you went through, I appreciate that. Curious if any of these changes were, were all of these changes staff initiated or were any initiated because of conversations with developers or contractors? Because I know a lot of what the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, a lot what's in there now was the result of conversations throughout the developer community. So first question, were these all staff initiated or did some of these suggestions come in from outside of the city of Bloomington?
Thank you, Mayor Bossey, it was definitely both and. So it was staff initiated as well as based on conversations and ongoing engagement and education over the last year or so since the launch of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance.
Right, thank you. Council questions, Councilmember Coulter and Councilmember Martin, I didn't see whose hand went up first. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll chalk that up to the advantage of being first alphabetically. Could you go back to the slide referring to the previous surface changes and the open space changes? What current standards are and so on? Thank you, that's, so just to clarify here that that's those percentages listed, those are, those are current standards, correct?
Thank you, Mayor Bossey and Councilmember Coulter, that is correct, the top are the current standards and then below is the proposed incentives to be added.
Okay, and then I suspect I know the answer to this already, but just to, just to clarify that that proposed incentive, that's not an additional, for example, at 30% or below, that's not an additional 10 percentage points. That's an additional 10% of that overall surface. So if it's, you know, the total impervious surface standard would be just for the purpose of illustration, like 200 square feet. Someone were to be, were to propose a building with 9% at 30% or below, that new standard would be 220 square feet, is that correct?
Yeah, Mayor Bossey, Councilmember Coulter, it is in fact 10 percentage points. So for example, in our three districts, the standard is 70%. If the development provided 9% of the units at 30% AMI or below, this new standard would be 80%. Now you'll note that some of these get to 100%. And you certainly can't go over 100% with impervious surface and you probably could not even meet 100%. Simply because there are landscaping requirements and also stormwater requirements. So there's definitely some interplay between this incentive and those other stormwater standards.
Thank you, and then I assume that that applies then for the open space reduction as well, that those are percentage point reductions rather than overall percentage reductions?
Yeah, Mayor Bossey, Councilmember Coulter, in this case, they are percentage reductions.
Yeah, and I guess I'm seeing it's, it's a square footage number for most of them, so.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm, I'm wondering maybe Ms. Coleman, maybe you could speak to this. Walk me through a little bit about why, why these are proposed, because to be, to be honest, I'm a little bit concerned about these in terms of the overall effect that that these changes in particular might have on. I guess sort of the, the overall, call it aesthetic, call it experience of living there. I think, you know, we, we know, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is I'm a little bit concerned that we're, we're trading affordability for quality of life in some of these instances. So can you just talk me through that a little bit?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Bossey and Councilmember Coulter. So. I wouldn't say we're necessarily trading affordability for quality of life. What I would say is that this is the process to allow for the incentives to be applied as we review. And go through the process and look at different developments based on the, the level of affordability as well as the space in which they are looking to develop. And so with higher density, with the ability to do higher density, there is more opportunity to create the affordable units, especially the deeper affordable units that is a priority of the city council in Bloomington. And so it's, it's the first step in order to, on a project by project basis, to be able to identify and score and review. On whether that project as proposed will be able to work in that location where we are not trading affordability for quality of life.
Okay, thank you. I, I mean, I, I think you hear the, the concern that I have and I, I just, it, it, it sounds like you're obviously very aware of that. And I, I think that's a good explanation that this is more of a sort of piece of, of the overall puzzle on that project by project basis. And I, I think that will, you know, I'm, I'm still a little bit concerned about where it might lead, but I, I think it, it will at least give us the opportunity to kind of explore options. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, a couple of quick questions here. First off, so just because we've been talking about it so much, I think in part I've been getting questions, especially when it comes to our neighborhood commercial notes, we've really been citing Gateway Development District. And just to make it clear for folks, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and Affordable Housing Trust Fund are applicable outside of the Gateway District, correct? That's for Project Citywide potentially?
Potentially, however, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, as I understand it, was created to serve the needs of the Gateway District, which is outside of South Loop. And so that did, the Opportunity Housing Ordinance did create the Gateway District area that we are focused on, that we are prioritizing.
Okay, and in, in part, that certainly makes sense, especially with being able to use the pooled TIF resources of that district. In considering the fact that we're, we're kind of trying to have different levels of housing affordability throughout the community. I, I guess, are we, or have there been discussions as a staff about projects potentially outside of Gateway, including, say, the west side of the community? Or is those, is the pooled TIF resources that Gateway provides essential to get these projects moving forward even with Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
I, I think it's two questions here, so thank you, Mayor Bossey and Councilmember Martin, excuse me. I think it's two questions here, so yes, staff has had conversation around a focus and the ability to create more affordability or more housing development outside of, or excuse me, in the west side of Bloomington. Due to what may be available to, to look at. And then two, yes, the pool tip is important to be used in the areas identified within the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. So it's a balancing act that we are working on here to try and meet all of those needs and respond to residents and community members of Bloomington on needs.
That makes sense, and just I'll sneak one more quick one in here if you don't mind, Mayor. So I guess putting these in place and considering your experience working with developers on kind of their time scale. What amount of time are we looking at before we'll have usable data on the effectiveness of these changes? Is this something we revisit in six months, a year to kind of see how it was operationalized?
Thank you, Mayor Bossey and Councilmember Martin. I would say we, a part of ongoing tracking is in six months, we would know something, but I think a year would be a better, a better measurement to really say what has come, come to fruition. Out of these recommended changes, if they are approved this evening and what projects are completed and or in the pipeline due to the recommended changes as a response from staff and outreach and engagement.
Thank you very much.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Baloga and then Councilmember Loman, Councilmember Baloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Administrator Coleman, thanks for being here. And what, have we done some? Work on performing what these incentives do to our performer today? It. Frankly, my, my gut reaction is, is that we're being exceedingly generous. To go for 9% units and give a 50% standard reduction. And if you do that, how many more units do you get? In, in a project that would otherwise have 100? How, how many can you get on that same site with all of this being put into effect?
Thank you, Mayor Bossey and Council, Councilmember Baloga. So. I would answer the first question, yes, there has been some penciling of performers, case in point, 8012 Old Cedar. And that is a development that does need some incentives to allow it to go forward, to be built on that site. And so when you're looking at, I think you're looking at the slide that I have up, the open space, 9% at 30% or below, which would be a 50% reduction in open space. Depending on the unit size, you could look at an additional two to three units. And that can be a very big deal when we're talking about deeper affordability.
Administrator Coleman, doesn't that also increase with the height? So that they would qualify for an additional story? Provided that it works in that zoning district. And doesn't that increase by a third the number of units?
Thank you, Mayor Bossey and Councilmember Baloga, it could increase the height. I can't say for sure, because again, it's a project by project basis that may not take part in all of the incentives that are provided. So there would be a, a give or take on what the incentives are and what that proposed project would be. As well as the bedroom count of the units would matter and then of course, the level of affordability.
Yeah, and, and I was assuming that. The structure and the design and the number of bedrooms and square foot each and each type of unit would be static. And it would just be a linear kind of analysis.
Thank you, Mayor Bossey, Councilmember Baloga, that could be, but in your assumption, yes.
Cause it, it, and I, I know the problem is, is that we're not getting 30% or below. You know, that, that's an issue. And I think in this instance, we're. Frankly, giving a potential of giving away the ship. To be able to get 30% units. And the number that we're getting, and, and I'm just going to use for only nine units at 30% or below. An 100-unit project. It, it seems like the, the reductions proposed are overly severe in so many ways. Now, there's some of them that I do support, the carports, you know, that was just a bad idea. So I'm glad to see that we're eliminating that. But height, I, I really need to understand more about that. Because I don't know what the impacts are to adjoining properties. You know, is, is there any of those adjoining properties that could be single-family residential? That could be then impacted by an additional story? And, you know, I know that our planning commissioner, Mr. Markard is on and he could probably be better to address that question too. But, you know, there's, there's just an awful lot of unanswered questions for me. And I don't want to monopolize the time here, because I know that other set questions. For me to have responded to before I can support this.
Sure, Mayor Bossey, Councilmember Baloga, I can address the height question. So if there is single family next door, it would apply no matter what the surrounding land uses are, so that extra story could apply. Now, I would note that the city also has shadow standards and the shadow standards are not offered up as an incentive. So those shadow standards would continue to apply, which mainly affects single-family homes if the building is to the south of the homes. And would cast a shadow more frequently, so that would still be in place. But the one-story bonus would apply no matter what the surrounding uses are. I would note that the incentives have an overall relief valve. Which is that if the city council finds that harm is being caused by the incentives, either mainly to the surrounding neighborhood. That they do not necessarily need to be approved. So there's that review involved and, and kind of that safety valve. If you found a situation where harm was being caused to a nearby property or to an environmental issue.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, I do have another question for Mr. Markard.
Please.
Engineered wood is being requested to be added. And. I've looked for what a definition of engineered wood is. And they're awful vague. As to what a description is. How will I, as a developer, know how that applies to our incentives and uses for materials?
Sure, Mayor Bossey, Councilmember Baloga, this is one that was developer requested. We've had some projects wanting to use engineered wood on facades not facing a public street as an alternative to more expensive materials. And basically engineered wood is a composite product. It is wood, but it's rather than being one continuous piece of wood. It's composite of various woods put together. We found that it. We found that it is a successful product and we think that it would be appropriate along with the other alternative materials.
Would Masonite fall into the category of engineered wood?
Mayor Bossey, Councilmember Baloga, we do allow as alternative materials. Various, you know, like hardy board type materials, cement-based materials.
Well, Masonite is not a cement-based material. It's a composite wood material that has a terrible history of failure. I, I, I'm sure that some of our residents watching have had homes with Masonite siding on it where they've had to replace it because of its premature failure. And I can't distinguish whether or not that would come into the standard.
Yeah, Mayor Bossey, Councilmember Baloga, definitely not the intent to allow Masonite. We were, you know, we did not envision engineered wood as, as including Masonite.
And, and that goes to my point about the vagueness of undescribed term. Uh and and that goes to my point uh about the vagueness of uh undescribed term. And if we could uh close that up and tighten that up, I I would be appreciative. I will let uh others have the floor. Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman.
Hi, uh thank you, Mayor. Uh could we go back to the uh the slide where we've got the uh the different incentives summarized?
I'm sorry, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman, uh is this in the beginning or is this the modifications?
Yeah, I think there was one in the beginning where you had all the kind of little colored different bubbles and stuff. If you don't have it, that's all right. Uh we can just move forward. There we go. Go back. There we go. There it is. Those are the ones there. So I guess when I look at these um incentives, the very first question that came to my mind is you know, what is the goal that we're trying to achieve in terms of of each one of these areas, you know, kind of first? And then secondary, with these particular incentives that we have that we have proposed here, are these the best ways to go about it and why?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman. So first off, um what we're trying to achieve here with these different incentives is probably multiple, which is why it caused you to have a question. Because it is some staff initiated and some developer engagement initiated. And so what we're one trying to achieve is working together with our developer and resident community to truly meet the needs of the community with affordable housing as well as housing creation and um preservation that does not do undue unnecessary harm to mark to the market development. Excuse me. So that's number one. Number two, we want to um allow for opportunities and incentivize develop development of affordable housing in the city of Bloomington where it is of dire need. Uh so especially our fifty percent AMI or below uh needed units, um allowing for incentives to to get to that point. Number three, to increase density. Uh increasing density is is um twofold because it's one to include affordable units. But it's two to meet the needs of the uh destination city that we are and allow for opportunities for not only our current residents to be able to stay and allow for different stages lifecycle housing, but also to welcome new uh residents into our city.
Now, thank you for kind of summarizing it, rising that down into three really solid, you know, points. I was waiting for you to go for the fourth one, you know, have, you know, a foundation kind of set up with it. But let's let's look at the second piece, uh you know, that you know, you kind of brought forward in terms of um you know, that 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 number of folks here or a number of units that we get because we've been struggling to to try to uh develop and uh and attract it. And I guess that you know, when I, you know, certainly Councilmember Baloga has brought forward in terms of, you know, is 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 nine, that seems really small in terms of of what we can do. When we look across the the marketplace and we look across different communities that are maybe looking to try to do incentives. My question is, is that all we can get out of our bang for our buck? Can we get more? You know, uh from this. I mean, so that's 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 one of my concerns when I when I look at this list of things here. I feel like I should be able to get more. And am I, what am I, what am I not understanding? What am I, what am I missing in terms of the uh of the marketplace?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Lohman. So I will say, I will say this, it's steps, it's progress. Um maybe you would be able to get more in the future after we test it and see um and apply it now based on the feedback and education outreach that we have done. We are a pretty much developed city. So um when we have a limit on our land that we have at our disposal or excuse me, at our control as a city, um as well as a limit on our funding that we can provide to help uh to get to that real deep true affordability, then we have to take it step by step. And I think this is a good first step, a good step to measure to see how this how this plays out on some developments that are in the pipeline right now that do need some of these changes right now to move forward. And then other develops at developments as we are incentivizing further development affordability. Um I I hear the point of Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember Baloga that out of a hundred units to get nine thirty percent units or fifty percent or below units doesn't seem like a lot, but compare that to none. Compare that to none, right? And so
Low standard, that's a low standard.
You know, if 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 we don't have the incentives in place and our response to our community and the developers in which are willing to develop and want to develop in our city. Um and also to bring about mixed development where we're not flooding developments with just low income, but it's really across the board of affordability. And it says that everyone can live and work together and be a part of these developments and it doesn't have to. Um there's just things that I've heard from residents. It doesn't have to look like an affordable housing development. So again, achieving that really mixed community in the developments and having thirty percent, fifty percent, sixty percent or market rate. And so yes, nine doesn't sound like a lot in a hundred unit building, but I think it's a great first step, especially when we don't have much of any thirty percent AMI units available. And these are units without vouchers. These are units that are being created that don't run with the vouchers. Now, voucher can be used, but this is in addition to a tool that is already available. So that is my aspect on it and why I am very supportive and ask for uh your approval of these recommendations at this point.
Now, certainly I understand this is a living uh and breathing uh document and I'll I'll concede that. I know that's that's how this was conceived. This is how this is put together. So maybe I'll I'll ask this my final question kind of in a in a different way. So let's say five years from now, you know, we've got a council looking at, you know, these incentives and the things that we want to change. So would I be looking at nine percent at that point in time, ninety percent, what what should be my 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 goal level in terms of what I look at it? Because I just think of in terms of our broad population and the types of folks that we're trying to welcome and to be a part of this city. And I understand we don't want to make this all, you know, a certain uh style or type. I guess my question is, what what does success look like five years from now uh when we uh when we look at that that number, you know, I assume it won't be nine percent. But what what's staff's goal in terms of where they're trying to go uh with these incentives in this particular area where we're struggling so much?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Lohman. Um so I will say one staff's goal is to work within the marketplace, right? Number one is to work within the marketplace. Uh five years, I am so hesitant on saying anything about five years from now because twenty twenty has taught us a lot. Um so I'm I'm very careful. Uh however, I think of a good um wish, for lack of a better term, for staff or for the city would be able to see one, incomes increase, but that's not in our control. But two, uh to see developments that uh have taken these incentives and developments that did not need these incentives to create affordability that could be that could be ten, twenty percent affordable, but it doesn't have to be measured on those terms because some things have changed where these incentives have have ushered in a new way um for Bloomington to really lead that charge in the region and throughout the state. And so I would like to see uh, you know, somewhere up to twenty, but I can't say what that would be in five years for sure. Uh it just seems so long since we've gone through twenty twenty.
Check in on you in ten years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. And I I think um this is something that just occurred to me and I think this is kind of what what Councilmember Lohman maybe was was about to get at. Um but I'm I'm just wondering, and this is sort of generally related to the opportunity housing ordinance. I mean, we're we're coming on to two years since we adopted this and I there were, of course, there were a number of months um after we adopted it before it actually went into into effect. Uh but this this nine percent figure, I mean, that that came through the the dataless study, it came through the information that we had at the time. And I'm just wondering, you know, when have we, is there any thought to when, you know, when we're going to come and sort of revisit that figure and and see if that is is the number that that's going to continue to work for for our purposes?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Coulter. Um I've in in the study and I've only looked at the first little bit of it. Um I would say initially, there was a uh review to um look at it annually. And then um three to five years from time of implementation to really review that. I have not followed up with the consultants of the study, so I cannot say uh what the um expert opinion is around what we're seeing in twenty twenty and the possible impacts to be felt that we just truly don't know. But originally, it was reviewing every year and a possible three to five years um to probably make substantial changes.
Okay, thank you. I then that may be, you know, obviously you have plenty on your plate as it is, but um that may be a conversation worth at least initiating in terms of, you know, what are we, what are we starting to see there? So thank you.
Councilmember Baloga and and reminding everybody that we do have a a public hearing on this as well. So I think if we if we make sure that we get questions answered here and then we can have the discussion after the public hearing is closed and we can we can we can move forward. Councilmember Baloga.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I believe that uh the Met Council has given a ten year objective for Bloomington uh for thirty percent AMI housing, new housing units. And I'm struggling to recall that, but I want to say that eight eighty one sticks in my memory. Can can uh someone clarify what that number actually is?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Baloga. Uh yes, the Met Council has. No, I cannot clarify that number right now because I do have another presentation that I believe it's in there. Um and I can't pull it up while I'm sharing the screen, but I will be able to clarify that shortly.
Thank you. I'll I'll wait then uh and uh I didn't recall seeing that earlier, but I'll scroll ahead to the next uh presentation maybe answer my own question.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor, and um good evening Administrator Coleman. So excited to have you here. Uh so uh first, just thank you to you and to staff for all of the the really hard work and great work that has gone into this. Um so I had just one quick clarifying question. So in the council packet that was originally published, nine point three three um said something different than what it says now. So it had said that it was going to be reducing the grace period from five years to one year for the income um limits. And then in the new language, it clarified that it will be kind of dependent on the requirements of other funding. Can you just talk about that a little bit? I want to make sure that I'm tracking and I know what we're talking about as it relates to nine point three three.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Carter. You are tracking extremely well. Uh that was a mistake. Just to be perfectly honest, I actually I um included that and it was not the updated um language that was reviewed and agreed upon. And so in nine point three three, there will not be the change of reducing the uh transition period from five years to one year. Uh the only clarification that is added is that a lease may be renewed if it does not um contradict or violate any other funding sources.
Perfect. Thank you. Um and then my last question, because my other questions were already asked and answered. Um I just want to clarify, I think, what Councilmember Patrick was asking too, but I want to make sure I understand. The O H O, like this ordinance in general applies to developments across the city. It's going to be especially helpful in the Gateway District where we're really focused right now as a city, but the ordinance itself applies across Bloomington, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Carter. That is correct.
Okay, great. I didn't want there to be any kind of misunderstanding floating around. So thank you for clarifying that and I have no additional questions right now. Um yeah, no, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Uh just a couple of questions here before we get into the public hearing. So Ms. Coleman, you said a couple of times that each case is different and each development proposal is different. And and then uh Mr. Market Guard, you actually used the phrase that there would be a determination of harm is being caused. So and I know that's it's subjective in a lot of different ways. But um I was just jotting down here and tell me, tell me if I'm right here in terms of um the gates, basically, that a development proposal needs to go through, which would give the opportunity for a determination that harm is being caused and then it wouldn't be necessarily uh uh acceptable within the city of Bloomington. Now, I I think with with a development application, the uh an affordable housing plan has to come with a development application. You know, I mean, is that correct? I'll I'll just go through my list here and tell me if I missed anything. So you got with a development application, the affordable housing plan's got to come forward. It then goes through staff, back and forth with staff like we know all development plans do. It would then go to the H R A, the Planning Commission, and then the City Council. And in each of those steps, would there be the opportunity for each of those bodies or each of those individuals, those representatives of the city of Bloomington to determine one way or another whether the proposal is somehow doing harm, whether it's with uh inadequate materials on a street facing side of the building, uh the shadows, the impervious surface, any any number of those things would be sub- subject to review by those groups before it could move forward and and the determination would have to be made that no harm is being done by those by the development proposal. Am I correct? Did I miss anything there?
Uh Mayor Bussey, that's exactly correct. Um would have to go through several levels of review. So staff would be making a recommendation on it. Planning Commission would be making a recommendation on it. There's affordable housing involved. The H R A uh would be weighing in. And then the City Council would make the ultimate decision on on whether the incentives granted are appropriate and are they causing any negative impacts, causing any harm?
And this notion of harm being caused, this is, that's a subjective thing within the city of Bloomington. This isn't like if we were doing um uh the um, help me here. If we're if where we have to find a specific finding of harm to the neighborhood or finding a something very specific, whether it's a in a um a plant amendment or, or excuse me, a um I'm at a loss for words. I've spent a long week already. It's only Monday night, darn it. And it's um where where we have to make a determination, a finding of harm, a negative impact, something along those lines. And I'm sorry for not being very eloquent in my request there, but it's basically, this is within our own definition of what we mean by harm as opposed to an external definition that's been vetted by the courts or or standard set by the state or or something along those lines. Is that correct?
Uh Mayor Bussey, that's correct. This is not um any sort of a state standard. Uh so we wouldn't have precedent from outside the city. So yeah, there there's definitely more flexibility with this as compared to say uh finding of undue hardship in a variant situation.
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for that clarification. Council, anything additional or should we open the public hearing and see if there's anyone who would like to speak to this? I see no hands going up. Uh Councilmember Carter's had an old hand or a new hand? It's an old hand, okay? With that, I would like to open our public hearing on item seven point two.
Excuse me, Mayor Bussey?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, I just wanted to answer uh Councilmember Baloga really quick.
Oh, yes, please.
The Met Council, I believe it's eight hundred forty two units over the ten years and four hundred and forty five at thirty percent AMI.
Very good. Thank you. Long way to go, obviously. So with that, I'll open our public hearing on item seven point two, our opportunity, opportunity, housing ordinance amendments. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone on the line who would like to speak to item seven point two on our agenda this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have one individual indicate in advance that they wish to speak this evening. Alicia, do you have Dave Higgins on the line still?
Yes, and his line is open.
Mr. Higgins?
He's still here. Uh yes, uh Mayor Bussey and uh council members, uh Mr. Market Guard and Administrator Coleman, I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in here just briefly. Um I uh I'm I'm limiting my remarks to the storage provision, which I recall is section nine point two three. Um uh recognizing and respecting the the remarks already made today uh or this evening. Um I wanted to uh speak to storage and encourage and request considerate consideration actually for allowing the proposed uh amendment that allows for a seventy five percent reduction in the one to one storage requirement in the one-to-one storage requirement to actually be applied to all projects complying. So in that would include those initial threshold compliant projects that are providing 9% of the units affordable at 60% AMI. The basis, the basis for that is experience, and I should take a step back. I apologize. You got my name, Dave Higgins. I work in the development group at McGoff. And I reside in South Minneapolis, but spent a lot of time working in Bloomington on Bloomington Central Station within the, within the South District. A mixed-use transit oriented development project. And we came forward a few years ago with a project that's now called the Fenley Apartments, 402 units. At the time, there were some nuances in the applicable HXR district, which relieved the project of we're now finding inadvertently, relieved the project of any storage requirement. Nevertheless, in somewhat of a compromise, we provided 50%, 50% ratio. So for that 402-unit project, we provided just over 200, 201 storage units. At the time, we talked through with staff their request for us to go ahead and provide the one-to-one ratio. And and we noted it was somewhere north of a couple hundred thousand dollars to add the additional 50%. We did some studies through our property management firm. That's that's one of the larger players around this market and a lot of other markets nationally, as well as ESG architects who designed the project and some others in town over projects. They're designing and collectively operating around the metro, which found and we presented at time essentially an aggregate average just shy of 25% across a series of recent projects in terms of what was supplied. And what they were seeing as usage, again, that management firm is Gray Star Property Management, but what they were seeing was just shy of 15% usage of those storage containers. I I confess, I cannot tell you what percentage of those charged as opposed to made them available. But in any event, the 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 resounding conclusion of both those significant firms was that they're unaware of other communities and and we at McGoff aren't either, where a one-to-one storage requirement exists or any other storage exists, requirement exists. In any event, we went ahead with the 50%. The Fenley has been open. We'll be open a year as of May 1st through the beginning of March. We we have leased approximately 35% of the building. And we're holding steady at a at a usage of just under 15% of the storage we have available. So part of this comes up just out of that experience playing out as we had anticipated and as the numbers showed on a series of other projects around the metro. But also openly because we're in the midst of our DRC process on our next phase of multifamily out at Bloomington Central Station. Where candidly on that project, we're we're proposing to produce 25% because our feeling is storage, although the requirement exists in Bloomington by code, storage across the markets, Twin Cities and others, is is technically an amenity. And our feeling is, you know, the the best suited to to judge the demand and need in the marketplace for any amenity would be the the private sector developers who bear the risk and burden of of being right or being wrong about that. And so in that respect, we would certainly encourage these amendments to apply the 75% reduction. Because at the end of the day, you know, adding the storage adds costs. Adding the storage requires creating space that's not otherwise used for actual housing units. And it is, it is playing out as we have seen in those other projects presented when we sought approvals for the Fenley in the Fenley's operations at below 15% usage. To answer a possible question, we we do charge for that storage. But from everything we understand, it's certainly within market and and well under what somebody would go out and and need to pay at a storage, self-storage facility. So we don't feel like that's an impact, particularly where the number of people that are proceeding and using it seem to be relatively unfazed by that cost. We do feel like if the cost was meaningful, we would hear back from residents about that. And we and we don't have that anecdotal experience. So certainly respect all the initiatives within the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and a lot of the hard work of the staff and leadership to to make it happen. This next project, we're we're able to see some of those benefits in terms of reductions in in parking and glazing and some relief on exterior materials that we feel like are not compromising the quality and integrity of of that project. But we are seeing that it is helping some with the with the cost of construction, which, as you guys know, is rising substantially. So just to appreciate the opportunity to speak to the topic, happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll I'll wrap it up there because I know it's getting late for everybody.
I appreciate the comments. So just for clarification, you're looking to extend the the storage space reductions beyond the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. Is that what you're asking to to all of our our housing ordinance? Is that correct?
No.
So then maybe you can help me here. Tell me once again exactly what what the request is here.
Yeah. Yes, I believe the amendments make reference to a new 75% reduction in the one-to-one citywide requirement, but only afford that further reduction to 30% AMI units. And so I am, I am encouraging and requesting that the 75% reduction actually be allowed to benefit any project that's complying, even at the threshold 9% and 60% AMI, which would be the case.
Got it. Now I understand.
Number of projects, you know. Yep. Sorry for the confusion.
No, no, now I understand. And I just to, as I find it here, as it's written, it adds an additional reduction of 75% of required storage spaces for developments that provide 20% of the units affordable at 50% AMI or below. So it's not the 30%, it's 50% if I'm
Sorry, 50, yeah.
If I'm tracking this correctly, okay.
Yep, you are correct. You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right. Anything else on, anything additional to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for the time and opportunity.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for sticking with us. I know you waited through a couple of different things and I appreciate your patience. So thanks much. Ms. Wilson, do we have anyone else who would like to speak in our public hearing on item 7.2?
Alicia, do we have other callers for agenda item 7.2?
There are no more callers now. Thank you.
We have no more callers on the line. Council, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Someone? Second, Councilmember Loma.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Loma to close the public hearing on item 7.2. Hearing no further, council discussion. Ms. Christensen.
Thank you. Beloga? Coulter?
Hi.
Coulter?
Hi.
Loman?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Mayor Bussey?
Hi. Motion carries 7-0. Public hearing on 7-2 is closed. So council, we've got a number of possibilities here in front of us and a number of suggestions. This is, it it strikes me, this is very close to what we were talking about on Saturday morning, where we were talking about staff innovation, boldness, doing things with without trying not to let the great get in the way of the good. That we we had the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. It's been in place now for a while. We've been making changes as we've gone here. And in my mind, this is, this is a next logical step, but it's not the final step. I do believe there are additional, there will be additional work that needs to be done on this as we continue to listen to the development community, as we continue to track what we've done and how we've done it and how well it has been done and where we might have some shortcomings. But I I appreciate staff's efforts on this and I appreciate the thought that's gone into all of this and the engagement that has gone into this and the direction that this is going. Is it, is it the absolute perfect final? This is how we absolutely want it? I don't believe that's the case at all, but I do think it's the next iteration of our Opportunity Housing Ordinance, and it's the next step forward. Those are my thoughts. Others? I see Councilmember Beloga and then Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we looked at a graduation of the requirements from 9%? So that 9% would be, let's say, 15, just for a number. At 30% AMI, you know, that percentage grows in proportion to the incentives. Then at 60%, it's 12, and at the next layer, it's 9%. Has has that been worked and given any kind of consideration in the vetting of this proposal?
Mr. Markergard and Ms. Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Beloga. I know since I have joined that there have been conversations, but there has not been a concerted effort to move in that direction just yet. This, right now, the proposals, the proposal before you is what has risen to higher priority due to the projects that are looking to be developed to meet some of the priorities of the city of Bloomington at this time. But it definitely has been some discussion that I have heard about different things as we move forward and what that would look like. But there's nothing flushed out along those lines.
Yeah, because it seems to me that then the requirements and the thresholds to enjoy the higher benefit as a cost-benefit relationship to both the city and the developer rather than the constant number of units. If we look at our requirement, our, well, our goal that's given our 10-year objective by the Met Council of achieving 445 under 30%, 30% or under affordability, we need to build about 5,000 apartment units over 10 years to achieve that. If we just guess and say that there's 120 or so units in each one, that's 40 projects. And I believe that with these incentives, particularly the density incentives, what we will do is is create a sole acquirer of land because of affordability to multifamily housing developers in lieu of any other kind of development, just because they will be able to afford it where housing, industrial, retail, and other kinds of spaces will not be able to afford those land prices. And one of our goals is, is to find more ownership in Bloomington housing. And we know that that's going to be in multifamily because of the state of development of our city already. So I I just think that there are additional thoughts that need to go into what is being proposed here. I agree with the objectives, but I don't agree with how we're trying to achieve those objectives. I'll yield the floor.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I I guess I'll I'll echo that sentiment. I appreciate, this was a topic that came up over the weekend, being willing to be kind of experimental to take what works and push that further. I know one of the, one of the business books that's come across my desk in the last little while mentioned the phrase build, measure, learn. So put the thing together, deploy it out there, measure impact and come back and and learn from that and tweak. This is the second go around on that. I think my my only two concerns really, both kind of echo Councilmember Beloga to an extent. I know when we were first presented with this ordinance, there was some pretty clear data and maybe a lot of that came out of the Nexus study to help us determine some of these baselines. But as we're adjusting all of these dials, what else moves on those sliders? In terms of number of units we're producing, different flexibilities we're providing. And I understand we're pushing a few further than we have before. But in doing so, then how does that, if there was a big soundboard in front of us, what does that do to the rest of our levels? So as as we're looking at this, I'd like to keep a pretty sharp eye on whether it's those unintended consequences, if it's successful in areas we weren't anticipating. Because again, without having all that kind of in front of us, and maybe we don't know exactly what the one-to-one relationships are going to end up being. That just makes it a little hazier than it was, it seems like, the first time around. And to the second point, I do appreciate that the Gateway Development District is focusing on some of the areas in town that are most in need of some TLC, especially when it comes to those those neighborhood commercial areas we've talked about at length. And hopefully, some of these multifamily projects can be catalytic in in helping get some of that moving. But I am concerned, as Councilmember Beloga noted, the sheer number of projects in order to hit those Met Council goals can't take place solely in the Gateway Development District. And even if they could, concentrating affordability levels at 60 below down to 30 in that one area seems to kind of be counterproductive in terms of our alleviating geographic income disparities across the community that we know then precipitate a lot of other disparities in other ways. So is there ways, again, as we're kind of building, measuring, and learning here, to figure out how we can replicate the success in a similar manner in in other areas of the city that may not have access to those cool TIF resources? I understand OHO applies everywhere, Affordable Housing Trust Fund can can be deployed. But if this is the path of least resistance, we simply cannot shuttle all these projects to the same part of town again and again and again. So, yeah, I appreciate this. I'll just want to be keeping a close eye on what the ripples we're creating with these more targeted changes are going to be.
Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, you know, I think a lot of the points that I would make have been made already. I think I am, well, I know I am prepared to support what we have in front of us tonight. But, you know, as as others have alluded to, that support, I would say, is not without reservations. You know, I think we we do need to be careful about what we're, what we're proposing in terms of standards. And, you know, as others have said, what what kind of bang for our buck are we expecting, let alone asking for? And so I guess, you know, just sort of revisit what I asked about previously. You know, this this design, this ordinance, excuse me, was designed to be sort of a living, breathing policy, more so than I think a lot of other ordinances and so on that we we discuss on a regular basis. So I I think we we just need to be very mindful and very intentional about trends we see and, you know, what what the numbers are telling us. Because I think we 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 need to play our hand Um, because I, I think we, we, we need to play our hand very carefully and, and understand that um, you know, we, we do need to react to market trends. Um, but for example, you know, I, I tend to be one of those folks who uh gives a little pushback when someone says something like that because governments are market players too, right? And so, um, you know, acknowledging that, that we can direct some of this. And so it's, it's that interplay, it's that balance um that I, I think we need to be mindful of, so. Um, you know, I, I, again, I will just say, I think um we may need to uh revisit more substantially uh the numbers and, and how, you know, to borrow Councilmember Martin's metaphor, how the, how the dials are turned and how everything interacts with each other, um perhaps more frequently than was initially uh conceived. You know, the, the pace of, of change is, is accelerating all the time, right? And so we need to be, uh, make, we need to be sure that we're responding accordingly.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, just got a few comments here. Um, first, just sort of the easy housekeeping stuff. Uh, Councilmember Beloga brought up the siding and hardboard siding like Masonite. I agree with that and would just ask staff to take a look at how exactly that's defined there. I'm assuming this is trying to allow something like an LP smart side or something like that to be used on a project and not a, a product that fails like Masonite. Um, the height bonus, um, that one I am a little bit concerned about, uh particularly if it is um just next door or adjacent to single family. Um, I think there's a compatibility of use there. Uh, um, in other areas, I think it's perfectly appropriate to have that uh height bonus there, so. Um, as we move forward, just taking a look at that and making sure we don't have any adverse outcomes uh unintentionally due to that one. Um, maybe it just needs to be narrowed just slightly on there. Um, with regards to the storage, and I'm on record as saying this before, I personally think that's just a market-based issue. I don't know that we actually need that um at all, if you want my opinion, but I think that the, the request that was made was, was a reasonable compromise on that, uh, uh, cuz there, there is an added cost there to the project. And if people aren't really valuing it, I don't know why we're suggesting that they need to have it if they're not valuing it. Um, with regards to Councilmember Beloga's conversation about asking for more, particularly at the lower, I, I, I mean, absolutely theoretically, I think that's great. I do think we need to be mindful of the um the high costs of um housing and I think that the approach that has been taken here to take away, to take a look at how we can offset some of those costs makes a lot of sense. I do know that I've had conversations with developers to, um, and they've, they've asked if there'd be a willingness to um actually, unfortunately, probably go the other way and is uh, you know, they can easily get to nine percent uh at sixty percent. But if the city really wants to get down to thirty percent, would they accept five percent? Um, because for the cost of the development, that's probably about the same cost, which is why I appreciate the approach that um that staff is recommending here in terms of like, okay, if that's the barrier, then how do we further incentivize and provide a pathway to reduce those costs to get those same number of units within that project but at a much lower um price point or much greater affordability for, for the community? And um, I also think that Councilmember Martin's point of dispersion throughout the community, dispersion throughout the project, I like particularly the one uh that, that, you know, having these units dispersed throughout the, the, the whole project, having them dispersed in terms of the size of the units and things like that. Um, I think that was an excellent catch by staff to make sure that happens, cuz um I, I think that's really important to have um to avoid concentrating too much here and trying to have a integration throughout the community, so. Um, I, I just, I think this is going the right direction. I, I do think that there are a few items that merit maybe some additional consideration. I don't know if that needs to be done before this is approved or if it's something that, that we can do on an ongoing basis or if, if the mayor or city manager or anyone has a recommendation on how to approach some of the concerns that were raised, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Council additional questions? Councilmember Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so would it be appropriate for you or the city manager to, to answer that question that Councilmember Nelson raised? Cuz I, I have a similar one. Um, it seems like there are some specific concerns being raised and so does it make sense to vote tonight or does it make sense to make some modifications and then bring it back? And so I'm just curious. Um, I do have some additional comments, but I'd be, I'd like to better understand what makes the most sense in terms of the process here tonight.
Mr. Markergard, can you give us process uh ideas here in terms of the, the suggestions that have been made, if modifications could be made and if it uh affects the the project that we're, we're talking about on Cedar or, or lead us through, how, how does this all work if we tried to put this all together?
Yeah, and Mayor Bussey, council members, we do have that one project, uh, they have applied and it is reliant on several of the changes, uh specifically the uh new changes on site area site with open space and impervious surface coverage. Um, so that is our, our, our main time driver. Um, certainly the change on storage, if that's something the council wants to, to see happen, could be uh made just in the motion uh to incorporate that. Um, and if you like, we could certainly follow up. If this were adopted tonight and you like additional amendments, we could certainly follow up with a second ordinance or at least more discussion if, if that's what you would prefer.
And any of uh Councilmember Beloga's questions about uh the, the pro formas or the graduated numbers and, and uh whether or not, I mean, how long would it take to, to put that information together and give us something to talk about on, on that level?
And Mayor Bussey, uh, council members, that would be a, a more intensive effort, uh, would require, I believe, a fair amount of time.
Councilmember Carter, does that answer the questions you had?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. And so I guess I will just add um a couple of comments. I'm not gonna repeat what others have said, but I have um, I share uh sentiments that have been expressed by my colleagues on council. Uh, so first, again, really a huge thanks to staff because um I know a tremendous amount of work has gone into this and I really appreciate all the input you've gotten from all of the different stakeholders, um, the HRA and the Planning Commission. Um, and uh, so I, I do have, you know, it does make me a little uneasy, um, you know, some of the incentives around open space and height. Um, however, uh, you know, it did make me feel better as I was reading through the ordinance language that, you know, it seemed like most of them were at council discretion, um, to the point made earlier. You know, if, if there's a project in front of us and, you know, they've eliminated the majority of the open space, but they're right next to, you know, a, a huge park, you know, we may, that may sit better with the council, you know, a- as opposed to a project that there was no green space around. Um, and so, so given that that is included in the policy for each of the items, um, for each of the proposed changes, um, I feel like I can move forward, um, supporting this, these changes tonight. Um, but again, I do wanna, uh, I do echo a Councilmember Beloga's uh concerns that at that nine percent, we're giving them a lot for, for nine percent of the units. Um, and so if we can, as the next step, maybe start looking at those um, those pro formas at, you know, different increasing the, the affordability, affordability levels and the various incentives that go along with them and then kind of what we get and making sure we're getting the most bang for our buck, I think that that would be a great next step. And uh, but overall, I'm just, you know, I, again, I really, I thank the city staff, I thank all of you, um, for all the work that has gone into this and um for your ingenuity and your creativity. Um, and then, you know, I just ask that we keep that going.
Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it seems like some of the uh timing question is, is to help facilitate eighty twelve Cedar to come to fruition. And what other options are there to facilitate that? Uh, so that we do have more time to chew on some of the questions that have been asked uh with respect to the ordinance.
Well, before I turn it over to uh Mr. Markergard, I, I, I think within, within the ordinance, we do have council discretion and we could I, I believe the way it's written now, we do have some council discretion, but the way it would be changed, we, we certainly would. Um, Mr. Markergard?
And, and Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Beloga, that's certainly correct. Uh, you would have a lot of discretion on that application, uh both in terms of the affordable housing plan, but also it includes a regiding and rezoning, which uh provide the highest levels of discretion that the, the council has on, on land use items. Um, so definitely would be a lot of discretion on that uh particular item. In terms of uh alternatives for that site, unfortunately, the code caps planned development flexibility and things like site area uh at a level uh above which they wanna go. Um, so their only alternative would be a variance application. They've, they've not submitted that and it would be difficult to make the findings just because it would interrelate with uh economic considerations and state law specifically says that uh we're not to use uh economic considerations as a, a basis for a variance. So it is fairly reliant on the code amendments.
Um, thank you, Mr. Markergard. Um, I, I sense that we're um using the one data point eighty twelve Cedar as a main driver for uh moving this forward. And I feel really uncomfortable that uh we're, we're doing that in terms of having our policies uh shaped by a particular location and our desire to meet that location's requirements. I haven't spoke to it before, but uh Councilmember Martin uh did it quite nicely when he talked about location of units being in the gateway. And I see that uh, uh, the greater probability is, is that we're going to have clustering of any locations. And it will be on the eastern side because when we look at transit opportunities on the western side, they're slim to none. So uh, the eastern part of our community is far better served by transit than the western part. And it just uh seems as if we're going to have all the things that we don't want to occur until we really mindfully and intentionally go through and look at this in a broader perspective than a particular site. And while I want us to have the project go forward at eighty twelve, I can't support a project where I s- or uh, excuse me, a policy, this ordinance that uh uh I think needs a little bit more work. There's been a lot of good work done to it. Uh, but again, what was uh easy with the initial housing ordinance, Opportunity Housing Ordinance was, is that uh for each step uh there was information brought as to the foundation of how we got to a particular landmark such as nine percent. And um, we don't have that now. And I think once you uh establish it, uh, it will be difficult for us to dial back as a community on these standards. And it will damage our reputation within the industry uh if we do. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Council additional questions, thoughts? I think we're at the point, we've just, uh, we, we need to decide which way to move here. If we, if we want to take a step back on this and continue work on it. And again, we're back to the question of the, the, the perfect getting in the way of the good, if that might be possible. And then uh the proposal on Old Cedar Avenue would be in, I don't know if it would be in peril, but I don't know if it would. I, I don't know if it's going to work. I, I don't know if the timing is gonna work. Um, and we'd have then an opportunity to, to, to continue to refine the uh, the ordinance and, and continue to work through it. Or uh, or the other possibility would be to, to move forward with this, to apply it uh as it stands now or as it would be amended to that uh, the project and, and other projects coming forward. Um, with the thought that if we wanted to change it in the future, we'd, we would have that opportunity like we're, as though we're changing it now. So, Councilmember Loman, you put your hand up. Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, I don't need to restate everything that everybody else has stated, but my, my question that I had is, so if we were to not pass this uh tonight, cuz we're concerned about uh some of those points that were raised, where we could just do a little more work and kind of bring it back. And I understand this whole perfect getting in the, in the you know, in place of the good, but it'd be hard to dial this stuff back once you kind of let it out of the, out of the box. How much in jeopardy would we put this proposal if we were to, you know, vote this thing down? Is there any way to get this stuff back in time to where we could, could uh, could still move it and see we could still save that project? Or is that just something that just can't be done? Or is there something we could do tonight with this uh uh ordinance where we could pass the pieces uh that would allow that project to move forward and uh um, and uh be able to, to make this, uh, get this where, where it needs to be?
Ms. Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Loman. So, um, yes, it would be in uh actually will be in a great uh position of not moving forward as a project due to the different sources of funding that the project um has been awarded or has um, has taken out. Um, I would add that, yes, in um, in the example you provided, there are portions of this uh recommended changes that you could move forward this evening, that eighty twelve old Cedar would be able to potentially continue to move forward on the timeframe in which it needs to align with. I also uh wanna add that um, the Planning Commission and the HRA um, and the engagement that was done all did recommend moving forward with these changes, but also with the understanding that uh this is an ongoing thing that we will continue to track and look at. And I wanna say that when the Planning Commission did um mention in the meeting to recommend going forward the changes, it was really important for um them to see projects. So uh, we can take it back and start to do a lot of different things and not have a single project that we can align that with and we won't know how that plays out. Or we can go ahead and, and approve these changes um now uh or the changes that apply to eighty twelve old Cedar and continue to track and look at um what we are gonna continue to look at regardless, but also just have the conversations and really uh dig deeper as council members have um, have brought up on more than one occasion this evening.
You know, I would feel most comfortable, that option you have raised around the eight twelve stuff, moving that forward. And I think that's the whole goal here is to get that forward. I think there's some, some serious questions here that I think we ought to dig into. And so just one council member I would support. I don't know how we do that, you know, Mayor, Melissa, manager, how we could do that, but uh that'd be where, where I would, would uh, would kind of sit with this. Um, you know, otherwise I don't know that I can support this the way this is today. Um, so I think it's just some very good questions in terms of dispersion. Uh, we talk about equity inclusion, um, and we talk about uh some of the things that uh Councilmember Beloga raised. I don't wanna get into all that, but uh I think that's where I'm at right now.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess, you know, I'm, I'm open to discussing moving portions of the changes forward tonight. I, I get a little bit, little bit wary of slicing and dicing proposals like that on the fly like this. Um, if for no other reason than, you know, making sure we're all on the same page, we all understand what's going on and that the public does as well. as well. I guess one, and you know, at the risk of sort of throwing more confusion in here, would it, for the, the folks who have concerns, and I, you know, I share them, to be clear, would it be more palatable to adopt these changes and, you know, and request that staff come back within a certain timeframe to address some of these concerns? I don't know what that timeframe would be, but just to sort of include that accountability piece, you know, acknowledging that this is, you know, this is the first step, this is not, and this is an imperfect proposal, but that we move forward with it and sort of, you know, ask staff to come back perhaps earlier than, than they otherwise would have to address some of those concerns. Is that something folks might be interested in?
I guess I'm kind of curious what that might look like, or if that's doable. Mr. Berugie?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, staff is supportive of that recommendation. The, I think the fact is that, as has been mentioned before, the opportunity housing ordinance is a living document, as it were, right? And so we're continuing to evaluate the issues as we go. So, you know, we can, we can probably bring back responses on, on some of the concerns in a, I would say, a relatively brief period of time. But, you know, the one issue that Mr. Markergard indicated is a longer term project, and the pro forma modeling is one that is probably likely to take more time and may even need to involve the consultants again because it is calculating around the nine percent, and it's, it's a little more complicated. I, you know, I, for my part, I think it is entirely doable to move forward tonight and understand that there still is a high level of discretion for the council on this project. I think that the, the, so just so we're clear, moving forward on this tonight does not move that project forward, right? It just allows that project to continue in the process. It's still going to have to meet a lot of the scrutiny and the plan review that is going to be necessary. But to Ms. Coleman's point, the, the funding streams are in real jeopardy if we don't get there. And I don't think that we're necessarily undermining the, the process here to benefit one specific project. I think that we can continue to hold to the standards of review as we work through this and still come back and address the concerns that council has. So I think Councilmember Coulter's suggestion makes sense, that we can certainly look at a time to bring it back. And I'd look to Ms. Coleman and Mr. Markergard for any suggestions they'd have on a reasonable timeframe for
Ms. Coleman, Mr. Markergard, any ideas of reasonable timeframes?
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, councilmembers, I'm thinking three months would seem like a logical period of time. And I'd want Ms. Coleman to weigh in on that.
And I'd have to, I'd assume we'd head back to HRA and Planning Commission to consider all these as well?
We can certainly consult with those bodies. I think what Glenn's talking about is bringing it back to council, but that also allows us time to move through and just get the input from the other bodies.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bussey. That is correct. Thank you, Mr. Markergard. I think three months would be a reasonable time.
So council, we're, we're at a point, I guess we've got to decide how we want to look at this. Do we want to, to move forward, or do we want to put this back on the back burner and talk about it a bit more before we, we make these changes to the, the ordinance? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, considering a good chunk of, of kind of what I'd like to dig into relates to the Gateway Development District and what might need to be replicated elsewhere in the community, I'd be comfortable moving forward with that and just be hoping for the outlines of a conversation around that two and three months.
All right, I think that makes sense. Council, would anybody like to offer a motion on this, one way or the other? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually, let me move back to my, my agenda packet here. So I will move to approve new development incentives and modifications to existing incentives of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance in Chapter Nine of City Code. And actually, maybe I should have asked this question before I started making the motion. But I guess, would it, would it be appropriate to add to that motion to direct staff to come back, say, approximately three months from now with further refinements based on the discussion tonight?
I think that makes good sense. Yes, that would be, that would be a good addition to the, to the motion if you wanted to do that.
So that, that is my motion then, to, I will restate it for the record, to approve new development incentives and modifications to existing incentives of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance in Chapter Nine of the City Code, in addition to directing staff to come back to the council in approximately three months with further refinements and proposals to address concerns raised this evening.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll get to your question in just a second, Sean, and we'll see if we have a second first. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Martin to adopt the motion as stated. Question, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just a quick question. I know we had a developer that asked us to take a look at one area. And from what I heard, they are in the development plan review phase, and I just wanted to make sure that that three month timeframe to look into that issue would also work with that project, or if it would create complications for them.
Mr. Markergard?
Yes, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson, are you referring to the comment received tonight from Mr. Higgins with McGuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they do plan to apply for a development within the next month. So that's definitely an issue of high interest for them.
Okay. So I guess with that, would it be possible to, I guess, I don't know how to approach it, to accommodate that, just, I don't want to mess up their process while we look into considering that issue. But I also know we're very busy, and I don't know that we'll get to it in the next month. So I guess maybe...
Were you looking to offer an amendment regarding the storage space reduction?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I guess if we maybe amended that to meet the, their request, if there's support for that, I think we could just do it. If there's not support for it, at least they would know that. Or if it needs to be pushed back to have further discussion.
So who is taking notes well enough to Mr. Higgins' comments about the reduction of seventy-five percent of required storage, but not necessarily with the provide twenty percent of the units at fifty percent of AMI or below, but rather to change the, to put that within the nine percent that currently is in place? Councilmember Beloga, do you have a, you have language or suggestion or ideas there?
I don't have either language or suggestion, but I have a question of Mr. Markergard. I recall that the HRX zoning district, and I presume that's the zoning district that Mr. Higgins was talking about, does not have storage requirement and that on the Felton project, that was negotiated between the developer and council to achieve fifty percent of units. So we may be chasing a red herring on this one, but Mr. Markergard has pretty good grasp on this, so he could probably answer it without a lot of research.
Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Beloga, what, what you've said is correct in the past. So the last development that went through was not subject to it by ordinance, but it was negotiated. However, that code has been amended, and it now applies uniformly citywide. So hence why they're seeking relief from the provision.
And is it fair to say that we can't amend that ordinance because it wasn't noticed? And it isn't pertaining to OHO, which is before us? Is that correct? I'm talking about tonight, of course.
Yeah, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Beloga, you could certainly amend the motion to include language to modify that OHO flexibility on storage. I believe what Mr. Higgins requested was to modify the requirement to be seventy-five percent reduction with nine percent of the units at sixty percent AMI.
So I did not catch that. He, this is an affordable, this does come under the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct.
Councilmember Coulter, you have a question?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused about where we are in the discussion here. Did, are we, is this, I don't even know how to phrase what I'm trying to ask. So Councilmember Nelson raised this issue of, of storage space, and I'm just wondering, was, was the request to amend the motion to modify the storage space standards, or to explore that possibility?
And I think that's what we're trying to get to right now. I believe the intention was to modify the storage space standards.
So I, that being the case, I will say, I, I would need to, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the changes that have been proposed tonight. I would need more information and to digest further changes a little bit more than I would have time for, for tonight.
Understood, okay.
So I, I would say, I guess, and I don't know what, I'm, maybe we'll turn to the Roberts Rules experts here. I'm not sure what my, my authority is as the maker of the motion, but I'm, I'm not comfortable making that further alteration here tonight.
Right now, we don't have a motion. We don't have an amended motion or a proposal for an amendment. We have a discussion going on right now. And unless Councilmember Nelson makes an, a motion for an amend, an amended motion, that's all kind of moot, the discussion there. So Councilmember Nelson, or...
I mean, I guess, you know, I brought it up in, as just a point of discussion to see if others were interested in doing that, or if there was something that staff saw as a way to maybe take a look at that a little bit quicker. Again, just being mindful of the, the timeframe for that development and that project, and not wanting them to have to redo a bunch of design. I can sympathize with Councilmember Coulter's just not being prepared to. It wasn't specifically what we're going to look at. So, but, I mean, if, if there are people that would like to do it, I'd be willing to do it right now, but I would also be willing to just take a look at it sometime in the next month if possible, just so they have it within their timeframe.
And I think that would be manageable. I think within the next month or the next sixty day timeframe, and try and work with the folks at McGuff and see if we can't find a path forward there.
For me, Mayor, I think that's good enough. I got a confidence in our staff and team that they'll work with the developer to come up with something. And if there's something to be brought forward to the council, that, 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 as long as the city manager and yourself, Mayor, are okay with that, I think, I think that seems like the most logical path forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Loman? Are you going to school us on Roberts Rules here?
Well, yeah, I mean, so, yeah. So what I would say is that he, he could have certainly put a motion forward, and then you get a second, and then, you know, you'd run all around and try to vote that off. But obviously, he's not doing that. Certainly, I would be interested in what Councilmember Nelson is putting forward. And this is the very reason why I don't want to, you know, I wanted to just get this proposal through. Because I think there's so many different other proposals that are like this, that I just think this would just, if we were to just put this back in there and work it through a little bit more, I think we'd come out with a better, better proposal. I'm not saying what we've got right now isn't great. It's, it's a, it's a good start, but I think there's some other things that are coming before us, and we're going to see more proposals. And I just would, would feel better if we took a step back, made sure we get the eight twelve passed through, but then, you know, worked on some of these other items here that are, that are coming forward. That, that's, that's going to be why I'm not going to support this motion that we've got before us. And I certainly thank Councilmember Coulter for trying to get a mid, a midpoint between us. But, you know, I think it's, I think it's time for us to vote on this. And I also want to remind, if anybody were to call the question, you also need a second for that, before that can happen, and you'd have to vote on that. But I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to say that I think we should move this forward. I think we've had enough discussion on this.
I would agree. We have talked it around. We do have a motion and a second. Ms. Christensen, help me remember, the motioner was Councilmember Coulter, and the second was Councilmember Martin, I believe?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga? Councilmember Beloga?
Sorry, name?
Thank you. Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
No.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries five to two with Loman and Beloga in opposition. We move forward with it, but I do think, I think staff has heard that the belief of the council is that this is, as we've said a few times here, a living document, and we want to continue this discussion because we're not, we're not exactly there yet. We're getting close, closer at least, but we know that there's going to be additional changes in the future, and look forward to continuing this discussion to make our opportunity housing ordinance as useful and as effective as it can be. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Markergard. Appreciate it.
Mayor Bussey, just one quick comment on a summary publication motion?
I do not have that on my motion sheet, but if we have to do summary publication, I will look for a motion for summary publication.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second, Councilmember Loman.
Got a motion by Councilmember Martin and a second by Councilmember Loman for summary publication. Hearing no further discussion by the council, Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember Coulter?
He must have stepped away, I think.
All right, Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. Motion carries six to zero. With that, I believe our public comment or public hearing portion of the evening is over. Ms. Wilson, I think we can release our operator for the rest of the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alicia, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, Chris, I can hear you.
Great. Thank you for your assistance tonight. We are all done with public comment, so you can go ahead and disconnect the line.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you for your help tonight. Let's move on our agenda to item eight point two. We've got a numbering issue here, too. I think eight point two, which is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund manual. And Ms. Coleman is going to lead us through that as well. Ms. Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Bussey. Let me share my screen. All right, so Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator, tonight, we will be bringing forward the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The Opportunity Housing Ordinance was first adopted by the City Council on February twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, with the goal to encourage the creation of opportunity housing units and the preservation of existing affordable housing buildings. The OHO, as it's better called, was amended in August twenty nineteen and launched in full effect in September twenty nineteen. On December sixteen... On December sixteen, twenty nineteen, the City Council approved the dedication of fifteen point two million dollars to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund revolving loan fund that was created through the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. The Opportunity Housing Ordinance is designed to encourage onsite production of affordable housing units and preserve existing affordable units while not creating undue constraints to the financial viability of new market rate housing developments. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is a financing tool to aid in this goal. It is managed by the H R A with the guidance from an advisory committee comprised of local officials and housing development experts. The city's finance department administers the fund. There is a need to encourage and assist in the development and preservation of affordable housing for families who are part of the workforce in the city who fall within the extremely low income to low income categories. As a public investment instrument, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is expected to result in public good and encourages development projects that contribute to economic growth and community revitalization. The following community development priorities will be considered in evaluating the public good. Affordable housing and economic development, high impact area, high quality design, catalyst for future investment and return on investment. This is a outlay of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. As you can see, there's the revolving loan fund and then the Housing Stability Fund, which has two different sectors, rent and services. And the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as a whole is there to meet the the goals that we have set of extremely low units all the way to market rate units. So the revolving loan fund is used for development gap funds in particular. So the fifteen point two million dollars that was established is for development gap funds used for land and building acquisition, demolition and site improvements, streets, sidewalks and parking, new construction, facade and building renovation, landscaping and property improvements and infrastructure improvements. The Housing Stability Fund are grant funds that are held for extremely low income, thirty percent A M I, in two different areas. Rent, so it's meeting the difference between rent at sixty percent A M I and thirty percent A M I. That is approximately fifteen thousand dollars per unit per year that is needed. And the funding is still to be determined on this fund. It also can assist with services. So that's assisting rental or property management services to assist tenants to maintain housing stability. Again, funding is still to be determined. The committee will report to the H R A Commission regarding the operation activity of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The Advisory Committee is responsible for working with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund applicants from application through predevelopment and loan closing, construction and project completion. The completed application and structured loan are reviewed by the committee for approval or disapproval. The committee's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for final action. The Advisory Committee will consist of four or five members, including the following. Community Development Director, the city's Chief Financial Officer, the H R A Administrator, the H R A Board of Commissioners Chair and H R A Municipal Advisors. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund Manual provides background information, identifies goals and priorities and establishes uses and how to apply. The manual is an internal and external facing document. Today, I'm asking to for approval of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Manual, which includes policies, procedures, as well as the application and outlines how all of this will work together and that council has final approval on any application moving forward. I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. I should correct myself, I think I called this incorrectly. I was confused once again, I thought this was item eight point two. It is in fact item eight point one. So I apologize for that. Council, any questions? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess just two sort of, you could call them nitpicky questions, but under the the priorities section, you know, maybe it's just working at the legislature, but I I pick up on small pieces of language on some things. And, you know, the the sentence, the following community development priorities will be considered in evaluating the public benefit. It it to me, it could be read a little bit limiting. And so I'm just wondering if if there is any thought or or desire on a sort of more catchall phrase to accommodate something that might well fall within good use of of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but that isn't necessarily described in the categories listed. And that answer may be no, that's a perfectly acceptable answer, but it was something I wanted to raise. And then the second question is under funding sources. I don't see state resources mentioned anywhere. And I wonder if that's maybe not necessarily something that is going to be the case now, but certainly could be in the future. We want to make sure we're we're open to that as well.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Coulter. So for your first question, are you thinking must? Are you thinking instead of will be, you are thinking must be?
Actually, I was thinking the more the the other the other direction, maybe. Or, you know, potentially even just like a different category under the priorities that's more, you know, general in in focus. But I I didn't have any really specific thoughts other than that. It was more just a partly rhetorical question, I guess you could say.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Coulter. So as I understand it, the priorities that are placed, that are put in place, that are used to evaluate the applications, there's a little bit more detail under each one of those topics. Those are the high level topics, but there's more specific detail and I can definitely provide that if you would like. And I would, we actually refer to legal on just changing that. I don't initially have a concern that comes to mind for changing that wording. And then I would ask that. I'm sorry, you repeat your second question.
Sure, and I I would just say if you could, if you could give me that detail that probably addresses the first question. So we can move on from that. Just it's a very small thing, but under chapter two, section two point oh two funding sources, I just don't see any mention of state of Minnesota resources. And I'm not necessarily aware of anything that could be applied in that case at the moment, but it it may be in the future. And I just want to make sure we're keeping our options open.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Coulter. We are for sure keeping our options open and by no means are restricting the availability of other sources or other uses or other funds to use in this by establishing this manual in this way at this time. It can always be revised.
That perfect, I, yeah, I that that was my only concern about that. It's just making sure that we're 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 taking all comers, so to speak.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Loman?
So just kind of a procedural kind of question, nothing, you know, not in terms of approving or or disapproving of the the manual itself. So I just want to be sure we're clear on the question here. So we'll have this committee that's going to review these proposals that are coming in. I noticed further down, we've got, you know, under priorities, which I I think they're fantastic. But one of them is around environmental sustainable design. So will that? Will that committee look at that process? I just wasn't clear in my mind. It seemed like that that's going to be a separate process. I mean, I don't want to get down into the nitty gritty of of how how this works, but I'm just, it's a curiosity of mine, how that how that will work with that environmental sustainable design piece of it.
Thank you, Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Loman. You are correct that a Affordable Housing Trust Fund application would be accompanying a development. So yes, that would be included and it would not be restricted to the committee that is reviewing the Affordable Housing Trust Fund application. It would obviously be a collaborative effort amongst our city departments in the whole process and the process in which it has been established through the different commissions and boards.
And certainly since we are doing doing this, you know, certainly there's a there's a there's a part of a of justice that's a part of this, that part of this affordable housing piece that we're doing here. And so I'm just, as we kind of look forward, I know we've got our new work group that we're doing environmental justice. And I'm hoping that we're going to be able to 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 dovetail those two things together with this proposal. I know we're not there quite yet, but I'd love to see us as we're, you know, looking at the, again, the manual is more stuff that you guys work work with from the staffing side of things. I don't want to get into that, but just want to encourage that we we try to make sure that we've got that link. I know we'll do that with the health and all policies that we talked about earlier today. But as we're looking at this, finding ways of getting that environmental justice component also as a as a part of of this of the work that we're doing in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman. Additional questions? I do not see any.
Or does it make sense to go ahead and move this, there's not a?
I'm I'm not hearing anybody come forward, Councilmember Loman. So I think, yes, I think we're looking to approve the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Manual. And so I think that would be appropriate here.
Well, then I shall move the approval of that Affordable Housing Trust Fund Manual.
Second?
We've got a motion by Councilmember Loman and a second by Councilmember Martin, excuse me, blank there for a second, Councilmember Martin, to approve the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Manual. Council, further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Christensen.
Thank you, Beloga.
Hi.
Carter?
Hi.
Coulter?
Hi.
Loman?
Hi.
Martin?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Mayor Bussey?
Hi, motion carries seven zero. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Coleman, for putting in the double duty tonight. We kept you here longer probably than you were expecting, but I appreciate your input and appreciate the work that you've put into all of this. And again, very glad to have you on board and looking forward to the day when we can all get back and city hall together and actually get the work done that we we want to get done.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Bussey. Could I say something really quick?
You certainly may.
The Opportunity Housing Ordinance and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund have both gone forward in discussion this evening. And there's been a lot of thanks of staff, but I would be remiss to not mention Sherri, Ms. Sherri Showquist and all the work that she has put in on all of this and really spearheading it and getting it launched and working together with other staff. And I bring her up because she is not here this evening, but Sherri will be leaving us for a professional development opportunity. And so I just want to make sure that the council recognizes Ms. Showquist. As Mr. Verbrugge has brought up to me earlier, that the council recognizes Ms. Showquist and all the work that she has done and the commitment and the commitment she has had to Bloomington.
Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Coleman. I would agree entirely. Ms. Showquist has shouldered a lot of the burden with so much going on, whether it's through the Opportunity Housing Ordinance or the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or a number of H R A projects. And she has taken them on and done outstanding work. And sorry, she's not here with us this evening to thank her personally, but I hope I hope Sherri that you're watching, so thank you very much and best of luck as you move on. Do appreciate your work. Appreciate all you've done for the city of Bloomington and and wish you the best in your future. So thank you. With that, let's move to item eight point two on our agenda, which is the City Council Policy and Issue Update. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got two items for the council tonight. First is an update on an issue the council has talked about over the last couple of years that I know members of the community are also concerned about. That has to do with the issue that was identified several years ago when we were doing the service assessment of our Public Health Division and the statutory language around the question of property taxes and taxation for public health services. Today, Representative Andrew Carlson of Bloomington introduced House File nineteen seventy-three, which clarifies that issue, appreciation to our legal staff, which worked to develop the language and provided it to Representative Carlson to submit to the Revisers Office so it could get introduced. And that would specify that that a a person residing in a city that provides local public health services would not be subject to similar taxation from the county for those same services. Notified the cities of Edina and Richfield also today, as well as the city coordinator in Minneapolis, all three of whom have public health, local public health agencies. Also shared with the county administrator that the bill was introduced, as I'd indicated to him, that we would provide that courtesy at the time that it was coming. There is not currently a Senate companion bill, however, I believe that Senator Wickland is going to be introducing the companion in the Senate imminently. So I know that Representative Carlson has requested a hearing. After the bill was introduced today, it was referred to health, finance and policy. So that bill is now active and we will work with Representative Carlson if he needs testifiers, if indeed there is a hearing scheduled in committee. So I'll stop there and ask if there are any questions before moving on.
Council, any questions on that?
I'm sorry, can you tell me, what's the bill number?
It's House File nineteen seventy-three, one nine seven.
One nine seven three, okay, thank you.
The lead author is Representative Andrew Carlson.
And obviously, thanks to Representative Carlson for bringing this forward. Thank you so much. Thanks to Senator Wickland. I know that she was planning on introducing it in the Senate and it's it's good to see the Bloomington delegation working for for the city of Bloomington again. So thanks to them. Any other questions? Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second item is just a report out to the community and and I don't want to step on your toes, Mr. Mayor, if you were planning to do the same thing. But the City Council did have a retreat on Saturday just to talk about a number of important issues that were identified first on January fourth, when the City Council was discussing their individual priorities for the for the coming year. And we took that information, brought it back to the council on February eighth with a little bit of a matrix to try and get some consensus around whether any of those issues rose to the importance of being moved forward this year. And that was the first purpose of the discussion on Saturday at the retreat, or at least the primary purpose. And worked through some suggestions on the objectives and and deliverables for those items. So appreciate the City Council giving up a Saturday morning to do that. That was very helpful. And as I indicated, on Saturday morning, staff will take the information from the discussion back. We will work it into the current strategic plan and bring that back forward next month to the council with an update on where we're at on our strategic plan and then show the the intent of staff to move forward based on the discussion that we had this past Saturday. So appreciate the council's direction on that.
And echo, thanks to the council for the time on the Saturday morning. It's above and beyond and we we had a good discussion, so thank you. Council, anything additional? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick heads up, I held just kind of an outdoor listening session get together back in the fall and with temperatures becoming bearable again. Well, although with social distancing and online tools still a priority, going to be having a quick kind of community conversation and listening session this Friday, the twelfth, from six thirty to eight o'clock. We're going to be using the city's Zoom account for that. So I suppose if you want to enjoy those nice temperatures, have your laptop by the window, keep that open. Feel free to submit questions ahead of time. Take those via email at p m a r t i n at Bloomington M N dot gov. And feel free to check out the Councilmember Patrick Martin Facebook page I've got there where I have the link to the event posted. Should be a good conversation, there's a lot of good stuff to talk about.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, just a quick one. A while back, I asked about updates on discussions with a private vendor as far as the motor vehicles office. I'm just wondering if we might know when we could get some and get an update on that.
Mr. Verbrugge? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Councilmember Coulter, we have not forgotten the request. We'll have it probably next week, if not than the twenty second, but we will have an update in that regard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a minute to publicly thank the superintendent Fujitaki, who, as most people know, is going to be leaving the Bloomington School District in a couple of months here, but just want to thank him for his long service to the community, and I know when I was first elected, he may have been one of the first people that reached out to me, got together with me, is really very helpful and a great partner for the city in a lot of, in a lot of different ways. Also, just want to thank him personally. Several years before, I was on the city council or anything, he worked with my family to help our daughter out and some things there, and he was very gracious in that process. And the thing I most remember about him is, because in the last few years, our, as crossed at a number of events, charitable, city-wise, business, things like that, he always asked about my kids. He always knew what they were doing or had been doing. He knew they played softball and volleyball, and he always seemed to be very genuinely interested in them, sometimes much more genuinely interested in them than me. So if they were attending an event with me, he invariably spent more time talking to them than than he did to me, which was, which was fantastic. They always appreciated that. So again, just wanted to say on a personal level, thank you, and on a community level, thank you to the superintendent and all that he's done.
You're here. Sad to see Superintendent Fujitaki go. He's an outstanding asset to this community. Councilmember Lohman?
Yes, Mayor, he certainly will be missed. So I had a sausage-making question for the city manager regarding, you know, just manuals and that kind of thing. You know, on the agenda today, I saw we had that manual for the OHO process. I know we do that for the, some of the human resources piece, but how common is that? And when does it kind of rise to, just for the the public, to have have something like that end up on the agenda?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, I think that you have identified an interesting question here, is it just doesn't rise to the level very often. The manuals for our personnel rules are, I think, a little bit of a different beast because we have a merit board that works with our Human Rights Department, Division, or not Human Rights, I'm sorry, Human Resources Division, on implementing the personnel rules, and so the the manual is a really important piece. It's an important policy. We have not had, to my knowledge, many, if any, requests for that type of a manual, like the one that we have prepared for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, from users. I think the the general experience is that people who are coming to the city with questions or concerns or an interest in a particular issue are generally finding the information provided by staff is sufficient. You know, I think the purpose of the manual is to explain a lot of complex information in one format so that people have the opportunity to do that sort of research on the front end before coming into staff. And, yeah, I'm just trying to come up with some things where where we might have a situation where that may be necessary. The only other thing I can think of really is our planning or development application process, in which case we have a pretty well-established process outline that I think the development community is is familiar with. That's the only one that really jumps out. I can take that question back to staff, though, Councilmember Lohman, and see if anybody has any thoughts on it.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, because I had seen that before, and I just thought that was an interesting kind of change, as it were, and I had to think in my mind, where else have we approved something like that? And so I just thought that was interesting. You know, if you just want to throw it in one weekly, that's fine, too. I just, I just was curious about that. But, thank you.
I just wanted to report, I had the opportunity on Saturday to get over to the State of Minnesota COVID-19 Vaccination Center over at the Mall of America, and they are doing outstanding work over there. I think through seven days or a little more than seven days, they've given 15,000 vaccines and are looking to expand, actually, the space that they have to to meet the demand. It is, it couldn't be more slick to, it's in the old Bloomingdale's space, right above LL Bean and Trevor 21, park in the parking ramp, walk across the the Skyway right into the area, get your shot, and then it's, I keep making the comment, it's, it's like a Disney ride, because then you dump right out into the, you empty right out into the gift shop, basically, and it works perfectly. But it couldn't be slicker. It couldn't be better run. It was, it was efficient. It was, it was well-lit. It was, everybody was very friendly. If you have an opportunity to get your COVID-19 vaccine, do it, and go to the Mall of America. It's right in our backyard. It's convenient. It's quick. It's it's safe. It's simple. Please do do it. We're getting close here. You can see that light at the end of the tunnel is growing brighter and brighter, and I really do encourage people. If you have the opportunity, please, please, please take advantage of that opportunity and get your COVID-19 shot. And thanks to, thanks to our public health staff, Dr. Dr. Nick Kelly and Amanda Lemke putting a lot of time over there. I know that Mr. Verbrugge has been working with the State of Minnesota, I believe, since January, getting in their ear about trying to put something in place over at the Mall of America. Our partners at the Mall of America offering the space up and expanding the space. It's working so well in so many different ways. I really do encourage you, get over there and get your, get your vaccine if you can. It's, it's the way that we're going to get out of this, and the way we're going to get back to normal sooner rather than later, so please do. Counsel, is there anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
We have a motion by Martin, a second by Carter to adjourn. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye. We are adjourned on a seven oh vote. Thank you all very much. Thanks for everybody for tuning in and enjoy the weather, and we'll see you all. Have a good night. Thanks.
Good night, everyone.
Night, folks.